All right. Excuse me, folks, I'd like to call to order the Village Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Will the clerk give a roll call, please? Present.
Here. Present. Here.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite everyone that's willing and able to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Without objection, I'd like to move item nine, the President's remarks, to this part of the agenda. Is there any objection from the board?
None.
All right, hearing none, we're going to open with the President's remarks. And I have a long list of people here that I want to give special thanks to for getting us through this situation, in no particular order. Chief Justin Timm of the Williams Bay Police Department has been our Emergency Management Director through all this. Thank you. Well. We're, we might have about 20 applause breaks if we do it that way, but we can. Lieutenant William Kostick of the Williams Bay Police Department has acted as our Public Information Officer and coordinated with all the media requests. Thank you to Lieutenant Kostick. Lieutenant, we'll do it in batches here. Lieutenant Jason Rowland of the Walworth County Sheriff's Office has been their representative as an Emergency Management Director for the county. Thank you, Lieutenant Rowland. It's the rest of the Williams Bay Police Department officers and all law enforcement professionals from other jurisdictions who helped through mutual aid or who volunteered, including the Lake Geneva Police Department and the Walworth County Sheriff's Departments. So let's thank all of those law enforcement professionals that helped us. I'd like to thank Dr. William White, our school's district administrator, for arranging for the school to be used to accept water deliveries, to be the water distribution location, and to host the meeting tonight. I want to thank all the school staff, students, and families for the special accommodation that they've had to help us with while this process takes place. I'd like to say a very special thank you to the Director of Buildings and Grounds, Ryan Quinn, who coordinated the logistics of moving nearly 100 pallets of water, personally driving them in the skid steer or with a pallet jack, and helping every day to hand out water, and he's even helping the live stream of this meeting tonight. And a thank you to the school staff and, yes, even the students who helped volunteer helping with the water. So thank you. It says a lot. I want to thank our Williams Bay Volunteer Fire Chief Doug Smith for his help with water distribution. Thank you to the Williams Bay Volunteer Firefighters that came forward to help. Thank you to our Emergency Medical Services Chief Rich Galuth for his help. A heartfelt thank you to all the Fontana Fire and EMS staff who have been working the water distribution site every day since this began. We'll see. Thank you to all those first responders that helped us. Thank you to our Recreation Director Ryan Canope and our Assistant Library Director Emily Sanders for going above and beyond their listed duties to work long days and aid us with water distribution. Thank you to our Library Director Joy Schnapp and the library staff for proactively calling library patrons to alert them of the order. Thank you to our amazing Village Hall staff, our clerks Tina Coles and Cynthia Stanek, and our Village Administrator David Ledspike for staying late to answer calls and questions all that they could. Thank you very much to all those staff. A very big thank you to our Village Engineer Doug Snyder, our Public Works Director Wayne Edwards, and all of the Public Works staff who have worked tirelessly this last week to flush the water system and get it ready and for all of us to be able to drink again. They get their own clap. They're the ones down at the water plant putting in the time. Thank you to the Disaster Response Team volunteers. Thank you to all our local volunteers. We had just about every service organization in the village represented: Lions Club, Lionesses, Women's Civic League, Kishwakito, Williams Bay Historical Society, Williams Bay Volunteer Fire Department, school. And if I forgot you, you're not forgotten. So thank you to all of them. I want to thank, we had a few generous water donations in the form of water itself or reduced-priced water or donated shipping costs from Hy-Vee, QuickTrip, CJW, Niagara, and we had a generous $10,000 cash donation from Topography. So thank you to those organizations for helping us get through this. We're almost there. Thank you to the Walworth County Health Department and the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the aid and information that they provided us at their level. And finally, thank you to all the residents, businesses, and visitors of Williams Bay for their patience and support during this difficult time. So thank you to everyone, one more time. All right, that ends the President's remarks. Without objection, I'd like to move item seven, other items for discussion, consideration in action, updates and discussion on the Village of Williams Bay Water Do Not Drink Order to this time. Is there any objection? All right, hearing none. So with the schedule for this, we're going to start with presentations from Jesse Jensen, the Field Supervisor of Drinking Water and Groundwater Program with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, followed by a presentation by Dr. Andrew Jock, Chief Scientist and Founder of Water Quality Investigations. And then I believe is when we're going to be moving to the Questions and Public Comments section. So we'll have two presentations right now. So Mr. Jensen, please.
All right, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Awesome. I'm going to walk around a little bit because it's going to be really weird to have my back facing everybody while I talk to you guys. So my name is Jesse Jensen. I work for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. I just wanted to echo everything that was said up here today. I've been with the program for 11 years. I've been with the department about 15 years. And I rarely get to see a response like this one for something that's really as serious as this is, but the response that the community had, that all the partners had, everybody working together, everybody being kind to one another, I know that's probably not across the board. So there probably are pockets out there because this is a stressful situation. Totally understand. But just wanted to give kudos to everybody in this room for all the work that was done here in the last week because I know it was fireless. And I know that we all had to work together to try to find some resources. So I'm here to hopefully help give you guys some answers, answer some questions. Any, you know, the department, everything that we do is an open book. All of the information that we have is yours to get or us to give to you, provided with. So any answers or questions that we have, I'm here to answer. So I thought it would be good to kind of start off with a quick primer, just making sure that everybody's on the same page with how this started, you know, why now, what happened in the last week or so that that kind of led to this. So what is the problem with the Williams Bay Water and how did it get here? So this started for me last Monday. So I came back into the office and there was a report from the Department of Health that was made by Walworth County Health that reached out to state DHS about the situation where we had two children that received the diagnosis of methylobolemia. I'm not an health expert, so that one's a challenge for me. That one's also com-
The entry point is right next to it after an ultrasound. That's where they take the samples from. One other kind of variable that we're introducing, and I apologize that we're getting into a little bit of chemistry for the folks that it's been a while. So three things: nitrate, nitrate, and ammonia. We're going to be talking a lot about today. Ammonia is an unregulated contaminant. It's generally found in shallower aquifers with decaying organic matter or from chlorine disinfection. Dr. Jock's going to go into much more depth than I am with this part of it, but I just want to kind of highlight this of where it comes from. It's actually used by biofilm that's been established in the distribution systems and a nitrification process that converts ammonium to nitrous acid to nitric acid. He's going to go through some of the chemistry that are included. The result is nitrate and nitrite stemming from the ammonia levels that are in the system. Okay? Now, to the credit of the utility, they've identified ammonia as being something that they've been, that's been on their radar for a while. They actually came to the department with a plan to help try to solve the ammonia issue. And we had already been in process. They had submitted plans and specs. We had approved those plans and specs for a treatment update or upgrade to the system. And they've been in the middle of actually doing that upgrade as we speak. The anticipation date for that completion, Wayne, I think, is in November, November of 2025. So this is November. So all the treatment upgrades should be made. So that's kind of the long-term play. November on, you guys should be in good shape. So now we have to figure out what to do between now and November, right? So nitrate and nitrite. So again, this is going to be something that Dr. Jock wasn't in a lot more depth with. The big takeaway is kind of like nitrate coming from fertilizer. That's not really what we're looking at in this case. It's really the nitrite levels. And it's really that bottom line. Nitrites in drinking water primarily come from the oxidation of ammonia by bacteria. So that's something that happens within the distribution system, something that the utility is actively working on to try to clean out. Hence the chlorination, hence anybody that smells their tap water over the last couple of days, if you can smell the chlorine, that's part of the reason why they're doing that. The chlorine isn't meant to attack the nitrate itself. It's meant to attack the bacteria that's converting the ammonia to the nitrate. All right. So distribution system results. So the original health department samples that we received last Monday for nitrate was 1.125, and that's well below the 10 threshold that would get us nervous. The nitrite samples, as I mentioned, was two and a half. That was last Tuesday that we got that result. So we sent them back out. They took a bunch of additional samples, I think six or seven from around the system, and five of the six came back high for nitrite. And that was particularly looking for areas that we kind of recommended as far as dead ends on the system where there's kind of low water turnover. So if you're kind of at like a stubbed end, those are oftentimes the places that we're looking for. Not a lot of water turnover, a lot more time to do this reaction. Or areas were of low chlorine. So kind of distal ends of the distribution system. So five of the six samples came back high for nitrate, and that was between 1.4 to 2.6. Hence, the email that came from me to the village talking about a do not drink order and making everybody in this room very, very happy. But it's with all good intentions. It's trying to keep everybody safe until we can get this solved. So appreciate all the signage that I saw outside, coming into the town, going out of the town. All the sample, or the water pickup today was great. All the people were great to talk to, and everybody's been doing a great job there. And we're trying to get a path forward for everybody. So what's being done? So we required the do not drink notice. We collected the follow-up samples. We're assessing the results. We're taking more samples today. We're pushing, we're working with the labs to get all of those samples expedited so we can analyze the samples and get them back to you guys. Public notification, media, press, making sure people know about it. Do not drink the water at this time. Doing outreach to residents, businesses, critical consumers, Mercy Hospital, restaurants, businesses. It's been nonstop for the past week trying to get everybody in the know on this. Public postings, frequently asked questions, website updates, public meetings such as this one. Engaging emergency management, making requests for the local county and state resources as it relates to emergency management and additional water supplies and securing the additional water supplies. We're working on immediate, short- and long-term plans with Williams Bay, and to their credit, they've done a great job with this. They've already jumped on a lot of this, starting with chlorination, flushing plants, monitoring plants, treatment plant upgrades. All of those things are well underway. Communicating with residents in timely manner, making sure all of your questions get answered in a timely manner. That's part of what we're here to do today. And the goal is to actively manage this until your new plant comes online. So those are kind of the things that we have. How many people in here are on a private well? Got a few private well owners. Okay. So in the drinking water world, the only thing that the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources has to be, gets involved with as it relates to private wells is that when a well is drilled, it needs to test safe for bacteria, nitrate, and arsenic. Three things. So if it passes that test and it's constructed properly, then it clears the threshold that it needs that the homeowner is basically responsible for that moving forward. Okay? So we have recommendations that every private well owner get at least bacteria, nitrate, and arsenic tested every single year. How many people actually do that? Good. Excellent. Excellent. You are in the minority. But not many people follow through on their sampling every year because, well, that's up to you. The idea is that you basically are responsible for the people that come into your household and who you're serving the water to. So if you do have concerns about nitrite with your well, you can have that sampled and is part of your normal sampling routine, and then you can kind of determine. But other than that, the Department of Natural Resources does not have any information that could really be helpful because we have all the requirements of the municipal community water system, and we have tons of data on that. Tons of data on even smaller systems, but not private wells. So those are just some of the things that I would recommend. Do you want to take questions now, or should I pass it along and move it along?
The second presentation.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
And then we'll, some of the questions will be directed to you and Dr. Jock.
Yeah, if you guys want to switch over to Dr. Jock's.
Thanks, Jesse. Appreciate the introduction, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk in front of you folks. So Jesse explained what happened, and I'm going to explain why it happened. So I'm, my name is Andy Jock. I'm the Chief Scientist and Founder of Water Quality Investigations. And by the name of our company, basically you can tell that we investigate water issues. We're familiar with the water system here in Williams Bay because we were part of the corrosion study that happened in 2022. And the, what we identified as part of that study was that nitrification was happening in the system, and nitrification is highly corrosive to copper. So the copper exceedance that happened in 2019, I believe it was, was because of nitrification in the system, and that's where we were putting a plan together to address that issue. So what I'm going to go over today is basically explain why we have nitrification in the system. So it's going to be a little science-heavy, but I'll try and make it simple. So nitrification is a three-step process that happens within biofilm. Now, most people are a little maybe squeamish about biofilm. Biofilms are everywhere. Most common biofilm that people know of is plaque on your teeth. But biofilms are everywhere, and we could not live without biofilms in our environment and in our life. So it's a three-step process, and that process then converts ammonia to nitrite and then to nitrate. Now, that looks like two steps there, but I'll explain why it's three steps in a moment. For this process to occur, we need various metals in the water. Think of it as you take a multivitamin that helps you digest your food. Same thing with metals help the bacteria digest the ammonia and create the nitrite and nitrite. Couple of things, and I think Jesse alluded to this, is that, and I think this is important for us to understand regarding nitrification, is ammonia and biofilm are not regulated by the EPA or the DNR. And because of that, we have the situation that we have here in Williams Bay today. It's a pretty rare thing to have high ammonia in our water, but it is not uncommon, and we have seen it in other municipalities in the country. So the regulations are not going to prevent this issue. I'm hoping that there's a change in the regulations that we won't have this happen again. In Williams Bay, though, and Jesse brought this up, is that we're regulating water at the entry point, and what we're seeing then is a nitrification problem is actually happening in the system. And something like this would not have been detected through normal monitoring. It was only detected because an illness occurred in the system and it was reported. So important that this is an exceedance, not a violation. A violation means you violated something that was set out there as a standard and you knew about it. But the violation only would occur at the entry point. So this is the exceedance that happened in the system, and you know, it's a, maybe it's a twist on words, but we're just saying that it's not something that is necessarily pervasive throughout the whole system. It did happen, and the DNR and the community are responding to it. And the fix for this problem was already underway. So I want to talk a little bit about the chemistry side of things and why, you know, why we, where we, why we're having the problem that we're having in the system. So I'm just throwing some numbers up here, and some of these numbers are basically not, you would not see in a DNR report. Because what we do is when we're looking at a corrosion issue or water quality issue, whether it's in a building or a community, I'm taking a whole bunch of tests, and I want to find out why it's happening. I don't take a result, you know, if I get a test result and it says high nitrite, I don't say, okay, it's high nitrite. I want to know why it's happening. Because unless I understand why, I can't stop it from happening. I can't prevent it. So when we do our tests, we're looking at a whole bunch of parameters, and the water here is relatively high in iron, which they have a lime softening plant here that removes the iron. And what we also have on this test is I'm looking at copper. Copper is a non-detect from the aquifer, but I do have some copper that's happening in the system. I have molybdenum that's in the water. Now, that's a fun one to say a couple of times, but molybdenum is actually an important metal that's required for nitrification. And then we have ammonia in the water. Now, ammonia in wells one and two is 5.3 milligrams per liter. In well four is four milligrams per liter. Why is that important? If that ammonia gets converted to nitrite and it stops, then if we're running on well three, or two, on one and two, if that nitrite, I'm sorry, the ammonia gets converted to nitrite and it stops, I could have nitrite of five milligrams per liter or greater in my system. Okay? So that's why, so if we have nitrite of greater than one, I'm sorry, ammonia greater than one, we have the potential then for nitrite to accumulate in the system if it stops. If it doesn't stop, it goes to nitrate. Our nitrate limit's 10. So actually, we don't know ever if it's going to stop or not, but when I'm looking at the chemistry, we can see that there's a potential for that to happen. And then we have phosphorus, organic carbon, and zinc. And we can see how the wells are one- And we can see how the wells are one set of parameters. We have after clear well, which is after treatment. And I'm looking at a stagnant sample, meaning that it sat in that reservoir overnight. And I want, that's my worst case scenario. So that's actually the worst water that's actually going into the system when it's sitting there overnight first thing in the morning. And then I'm looking at from the tower drain, which is at the end of the system. And what we can see in here is that the ammonia basically is reduced through treatment and then it disappears when it comes from the tower drain. And at the tower drain, then we had a combined nitrate and nitrate of 2.9. That should not be 29. I'm sorry. That is, it should be 2.9. So what we're, what we're trying to do here is just kind of show the trend and then we're going to discuss this more in a little bit. So what we have then is nitrification, like I said, is a three step biofilm process. And here's the chemistry where we're showing it going from ammonia to hydroxyl amine to nit, nitrite and then nitrate. This is nitrous acid, this is nitric acid. Why is this important to understand this is that when we go from ammonia to nitrate, we react with water, but we create what we call a proton or acid and we create an electron. This is what's happening in the biofilm. The bacteria are basically taking that ammonia and using it as food and they're converting it then into a final product and they're pulling electrons on it. So think of bacteria and biofilm as nothing more than a little battery and it's trying to look for energy. And this process is highly acidic and corrosive to plumbing, which is why we identified it as the problem with the copper corrosion in the community and that's why we have this plan in place to, to, to basically reduce the potential for that corrosion to occur. What, and this is a part of the regulations that I, I sometimes get frustrated with, is that we're not really understanding the full ecosystem that can happen being in water and that this is a biofilm process. And I know when we talk about nutrients in water, which are not regulated, that we will always have cycling of nutrients. So if I have carbon in the water, I'm going to have bacteria that are going to cycle carbon. If I have sulfur, and they're going to sulfur, cycle sulfur. Have a nitrogen and they're going to cycle nitrogen. So why do they do that is they want to, they want to stay alive. Bacteria want to live. So if I have a group of bacteria that want to move that ammonia to nitrate, I have a group of bacteria that want to move it backwards and each of them create a byproduct that supports the other. So I automatically know that if I have nitrification potential in the system, it can only happen with biofilm and it's going to want to persist and it's going to keep going. So we, so understanding that is how we understand how to stop it. So the first step then, and I've alluded to this a little bit, is the bacteria basically convert the ammonium to hydroxyl amine. It's just a little, an amine molecule with a hydroxide on it. That step requires copper. Now, the aquifer doesn't have any copper. There was no, no copper in the aquifer, but there is some in the system. So what happens then is the ammonia winds up coming from the aquifer in excess. There's no bacteria that can use it. The copper's not there. That requires some acidity. It also creates some acidity. And what the interesting part about that is that once we're in a slightly acidic environment, the hydroxyl amine basically stays as a neutrally charged molecule. All bacteria are negatively charged. If it's, if that hydroxyl amine is not negatively, is not neutral, it's negatively charged, it's like bringing the negative pole of two batteries together. They don't touch. So the hydroxyl amine needs to be neutrally charged. It does that in a biofilm where it's neutrally charged. The bacteria negatively charged, they can easily take it up. So this is the, kind of the ecological niche that these nitrifying biofilms have created is they want to basically wrap themselves in like Saran Wrap. Whatever products that they create are trapped in there, but that they're allowing ammonia to come in. So the biofilm then basically creates that environment for them to thrive and then start that first step then of creating, a step towards basically creating nitrate. So the first step is the conversion of ammonium to hydroxyl amine. The second step then is done by the same bacteria and then they're converting the hydroxyl amine to nitrous acid or what we call nitrite. This is a process that's well defined. It can only happen in biofilm and it won't happen by bacteria in the bulk water. This is the process that's actually used in wastewater plants to treat your wastewater. But we find it, they're naturally forming bacteria. Most people don't realize that wastewater plants can be self seeded. These are bacteria that are just in the air. If they wind up connecting with waste, they just use that waste as their food. We have a little bit of ammonia in our water, so therefore the bacteria that are naturally around in the soil are going to basically want to convert that and use that as, as energy. Oops. So this, this, the second step of where the bacteria convert the nitrite into hydroxyl amine, sorry, the hydroxyl amine into nitrite, that when they, that step, when they do that, that requires iron and zinc. So there is iron in the aquifer, there isn't any zinc there. And there is zinc in the system once we get into the distribution system. So in the aquifer, we have ammonia, we don't have any copper, so the bacteria can't actually trick hydroxyl amine. And even knowing that there is some iron out there, they can't convert it because there's nothing there to convert. There is no hydroxyl amine out there. So we wind up having ammonia coming in from the aquifer into the treatment plant and then it goes on through the system. Sorry if I need to get it maybe a little closer. I'll hold it on my chin.
I think, I believe the comment was is getting really technical and
Okay.
We thought it was going to be more of a brief explanation of nitrification. So if you wanted to just wrap it up real quick, we'll get to the questions. We can get more technical with the answers, I'd say.
So step one and two, I'll try and abbreviate it then. Step one and two are completed in the, in the system in Williams Bay because copper and zinc are, are present. So the ammonia is present, then in the system we wind up seeing basically the nitrification starting. But it's not completing because the final step for creating the nitrate in the system basically requires iron, molybdenum and sulfur. There isn't any iron in the system because the treatment plant has removed it. So we wind up stopping. So the whole process then is that we have ammonia in our water, we have plenty of metals there. From the iron perspective, the treatment plant removes the iron, but now we add in copper and zinc. So we wind up having this nitrite occurring and accumulating in the system. And then we wind up stopping there and we have this, this health concern now with the nitrate in the system. So sources of ammonia, we have anaerobic aquifer water here. So there's a marsh wetlands area, that's where the ammonia is coming from. It's coming into the treatment plant and that's where we wind up treating it, but we don't remove the ammonia. We can also get breakdown of chloramines. So if we're chlorinating or chloraminating our water to a level of four milligrams per liter, we wind up having 0.8 milligrams per liter of nitrite as a potential that forms. So nitrification issues, why I'm concerned about it is that we can, we have not biofilms everywhere. We could have a community that has nitrite that's actually compliance, but if we have a biofilm that gets disrupted for any reason, then they could actually release a fair amount of nitrite into the system. So that's why biofilms need to be considered once they're in, in the distribution system. And when we have that released, then we're concerned about the, the, the health risk that's created with that. So part of the issue that is happening here today could be that the biofilm is turning over. We have definitely see that in spring and fall. So one of the issues that we wind up seeing a little bit more nitrate than we expect could be that there was a biofilm turnover issue in the system. So going back to what our graphic was, there's no copper in the aquifer, we have excess ammonia, basically no nitrate and nitrate at the entry point, but in the system it gets stuck in the nitrite phase. When we did our corrosion study, we did find that one of the services that we tested did have a fair amount of nitrite in it. And when we saw that, we also see that the ammonia is gone. We had another site where nitrite was variable throughout the system, but the ammonia was relatively high. We had another site where the nit, the ammonia was basically where we expected it to be. There was very, very little nitrate. Why is that important? Areas of this water system that see a lot, a lot of usage that are not on a dead end actually are not at risk. If you have a lot of water usage in your home, you have very low risk. If you have high water age, that's where the risk is. And that's why it's really important to understand why we have nitrification, what's causing it and what you can do on your part. So I'm sorry it was a little too technical or long and technical, but that's why I was building up to understand why we need to, what we need to do. So we're adding chlorine to the water to convert that ammonia into something that's less toxic. The chlorine will kill the bacteria that are suspended in the water column, but it will not kill the biofilm. Now, this is something that I'm at somewhat odds with the regulators on at times because the chemistry behind it is that when I put that chlorine in there, the pH is too high and the bacteria can't get it. So when the pH is too high, my chlorine is actually an anion. So it doesn't penetrate the biofilm. So in order for us to penetrate biofilm, we need to mechanically remove it or we need to create an environment where we minimize it. How do we minimize it? And we're going to convert, basically, we're going to remove the ammonia. So we're going to try and control the biofilm as part of the optimized corrosion control treatment. That's the project that's underway by, by basically taking away the ammonia, but then we need to basically, you know, convert that ammonia into a non-toxic form. So what are we doing as our treatment? It's called breakpoint chlorination. We're going to add a lot of chlorine into the water. People will say, boy, that's, you don't want to do that. Why are you, why are you adding so much chlorine? The chemistry behind it is if I add chlorine and it attacks the ammonia, if I add enough chlorine, it converts that ammonia into nitrogen gas and basically bubbles off. And the chemistry behind it is, the, the technology behind it and the, and the reaction behind it are pretty well known. What I'm showing here is a, is a simple graph that if I have a chlorine dose on the bottom here, it's showing me how much of my total chlorine I have and how much of my free chlorine I have. So total chlorine is a chloramine. If I add chlorine and ammonia, I create a chloramine. I can keep adding chlorine at a five to one ratio. So if I have five milligrams per day of chlorine for every one milligram per liter of ammonia there, I create a chloramine. But once I overload that, now I start destroying the ammonia and create nitrogen gas. And that's what we're showing here on the way down is that a dose here of between, you know, roughly 30 milligrams per liter is going to wind up having a free chlorine that's in a safe area, sorry, a total chlorine that's in a safe area for you to consume and we're going to drive the ammonia down to basically zero. Why is that important? If I have excess ammonia in my water, I have the chance for nitrite to form. So getting rid of the ammonia minimizes the chance for nitrite and gets rid of this problem. And that's the plan that we had all along. And that's a plan that's going to be basically brought online in, in November. Now, we could actually increase the chlorine further and get rid of all the ammonia and go into a free chlorine. Now, a lot of people would rather have free chlorine than chloramines. Well, a couple of things we're worried about that is there's again a carbon in the water. And once I start going to what I call break, full breakpoint chlorination and I remove all the ammonia, now I have free chlorine instead of chloramines and I have a chance for disinfection byproducts to form. I don't want to switch one problem for another. So disinfection byproducts are carcinogens and they're, they're regulated and we would be right at the limit if we did that. So that's not what we want to do. We want to just remove the ammonia down as great as possible. So the actions then, the recommended next steps, we already talked about the first one, flushing to move water through the system. And if unsuccessful, then we would do breakpoint chlorination. But we're really worried about commercial buildings, mainly hospitals, that if I do breakpoint chlorination, I know I'm going to disturb the biofilm and I don't want to have a biofilm release in a hospital. So that's something we have to work with the hospital on if that were to happen. The second one is the most important one to me. We have to educate homeowners on what they need to do to protect their plumbing. You're all homeowners. You're all impacted by this. How many of you have heard about how you should maintain your plumbing system? Very few. How many people have been trained on how you maintain your plumbing system? Nobody, right? It's very few. Plumbing system is something that you own. The water utility provides water up to the service stop. Whatever after that is something that you own. That plumbing system was installed per plumbing regulations. The water utility has no authority over that plumbing. The DNR has no authority over that plumbing. The problem of nitrification is happening in plumbing. You see where I'm going with this? The utility can do its part to bring that ammonia down to an acceptable level so nitrification is minimized, but they cannot go into your home and flush your plumbing. They cannot clean your aerators. They cannot chemically clean your water softeners. They cannot flush your piping. That's something that you have to do. So in all water systems where there's a water quality issue, the utility does their part, meets the regulations, you have to do your part. And your part is then, once we stabilize the system, is you're going to have to flush water. Take the aerators off and flush parts of your home one at a time. What I like to do right at the service entrance to my house, at, at my house, I flush my service line every two weeks and I flush it at 15 gallons a minute for a one inch service. And when I do that, I get a little bit of colored water, but if I do it every two months, I'll get dark colored water. Why am I doing that? I'm having less and less debris coming into my system and I have healthier water. It's my system. I own it. I have to maintain it. And it's something that the DNR can't do. So we'll help put some guidances together to help educate the community on what they need to do, but that's really, really important. And the rest of this then is basically what we've talked about. Long term, I'd like to see the, the DNR amend NR 809 so that we don't have this issue again. And what we mean by amend NR 809, that's the regulatory code for water that meets, that leaves the entry point and goes into the distribution system. I'd like to see that ammonia to be less than 0.1 there so that we don't have any issues. Well, actually I have 0.2. So then I'll leave it at that.
All right. Yeah. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Jacques. You could tell when a PhD is speaking, especially one that really is an expert on what they're talking about because you lose basically everyone in the room. But thank you very much for that. So we're going to move to the public forum stage. We'll, we'll try to direct the questions to the person that's best, most capable to answer. Jesse Jensen from the DNR. Questions from their end. We'll go back to Dr. Jacques about any medical questions that he's capable, oh, sorry.
I'm from the State Health Department. I can answer medical questions.
All right. So we do have a representative from the State Health Department. I apologize for not introducing you earlier. When you get a question, we'll have you introduce yourself. She'll be here for health questions. Questions pertaining to the emergency response will be directed to Chief Tim, Emergency Response Director. And we'll, we'll, questions about the engineering solution will be directed to our village engineer, Doug Snyder. And we'll just try to fill the gaps with any other questions that come up. So I just remind everyone that we are live streaming. I know tempers or emotions might be high and you know, you have a freedom of speech right to say what you want to say, but everyone up here does care and is sorry for what is happening. So and don't, don't make yourself a meme or, you know, because anything you say will live forever on the internet. But with that, I believe we have a list of names already set up, an order going? No, we don't? We have a sign up sheet, right?
We have like our normal sign up sheet.
Okay. We'll work down the sign up sheet then. Oh, we'll start with a couple of names we have here and then we can kind of, we have a row of open chairs here. So if you have a question or a comment, we'll have you line up and you can start sitting down in these chairs right here. Okay? I have Paul and Laura Schnell. Or do we need a motion to open the public forum? Or we just open it? We're opening the public forum now. Do Paul and Laura Schnell have any questions or comments at this time?
I was just wondering when do you think this started?
We'll, we'll ask you to come down to the microphone real quick.
I was just wondering when do you think this started?
Let me make sure that's on.
When, when did you think this started? Like the, when the children got sick? How long could they have been sick before they, you know, got that?
From a health perspective, like it's a pretty acute reaction to happen in a child. So when they, the parents saw whatever was happening in those children and took them to the hospital, like, I mean, that was, you know, a really great catch and a great action for them to take. I can't speak to how long there might have been nitrite in the system though.
The report said in early August.
Okay. So looking like maybe since August. Okay, so looking like maybe since August.
Could you just identify yourself since I failed to do so earlier?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm Dr. Sarah Yang. I'm the state toxicologist and section manager with the State Health Department.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Yang. We're all set up here for questions or comments, so anyone that wants, so if you're raising your hand, we have a whole open row of seats. We get to start filling them in like a line. You won't have to stand. We got some seats here, and then we'll work down the line. But Ms. Morrison, why don't you start us off? And then if you could just say your name and address at the beginning of your comment or question.
So my name is Stephanie Morrison, and my address is 82 Highland. But then I also own the general store here in the Bay. So I have a few different questions. The first one is, do we know where the bacteria is coming from? So I don't remember exactly how you said that, because I know that there's the ammonia, but the ammonia is helping feed the bacteria, right?
Yeah. The bacteria you're talking about are just natural soil bacteria.
Okay.
They're, they're in the soil, they're in the air. You breathe them in when you walk outside.
So have we looked at the nitrogen? And I know a lot about environmental science. Nitrogen is released from fertilizers. So is, have we been looking into that? I mean, that was something that I know I've talked heavily to about with the Geneva Lake Conservancy Director and the issues. I mean, everybody is fertilizing their lawn. Everybody, the farmers, the manure, all of that goes into our ground. And with less and less, like, prairie land and less and less open land, it's getting worse and worse and worse. So now, kind of to go back, so, I mean, what?
The geology in this area basically has a lot of buried organic matter from when the glaciers came through. So the shallow aquifer system in this area is known to have high ammonia. Delevin has higher ammonia. We do see higher ammonia to the south. We have seen higher ammonia to the northeast. Historically, wells one and two had high ammonia. They drilled well three back, how many years ago was it? Ten?
One at 1980 or 1999.
1999, and they drilled a deep well, and the ammonia was low. But because of how the geol-
But why is it going up then all of a sudden?
Because of how the geology is and how we pump our aquifers, we pulled the ammonia down towards well three.
So you don't think that the fertilizer and stuff like that?
No. The shallow aquifer system here is so high in ammonia. So put it this way, if the fertilizers were doing it, then we would see nitrate, not ammonia.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, the biological process, it's stopped.
Okay. Now, it seems to, like, at the end, you were saying that, like, we have to flush our pipes, and I understand that. But, I mean, as many of you village members know and some of you residents know, is that our village pipes are terrible, and they're very old, and we've been banding them for 100-plus years probably and kicking the can down the road. So now we're going to have to face this. So if it was my house pipes, say, that was causing this, wouldn't that be happening around the country then? I mean, don't you think that some of this is coming from the village pipes?
Actually, if the village's pipes were rusting, it would help us, because we would have nitrate.
Really?
Yes. Because it stopped in the nitrate phase.
So what then, what, what's the difference then? Why is this not happening elsewhere?
Well-
Just because of our high ammonia levels?
Correct. Very few communities in the state of Wisconsin have ammonia this high. Delevins, I think, was a little over one, but they would never, or actually, it was .7. But it's, basically, they're doing partial breakpoint chlorination there.
Okay. So we know Kish is right by where we get the water from. So if we were to move getting the water from, like, maybe towards Bailey Road or something like that, would that be better?
You talking about where we drill wells?
Uh-huh.
I mean, it's always possible to, to look at a different location.
Because if you're drilling the well right at the swamp where there's going to be the most decay causing the nitrogen.
But we can get rid of the ammonia during the process that we're talking about, which is partial breakpoint chlorination.
Yeah, but then aren't you playing a slippery slope there, too? Like you said, the free chlorine and then this?
I just, just to be as democratic as we can, Mrs. Morrison-
Sure.
We'll have this question answered. If you want to jump back in the line-
Yeah.
We'll do maybe at most two questions per person, just so it doesn't turn into a cross-examination. But you're absolutely welcome to ask more questions, and I thank you for the questions you did ask. They were very good. But you're welcome to, you're welcome to get right back in line and ask more questions.
Yeah, I'm more about who's paying for the flushing of the water.
Sure, we can, we'll-
You're good.
Okay. Sir, if you could just step up, your name and address?
Don Draggedy, I live 516 Woodlawn Drive. They gave us this sheet the other day, and we picked up water, but not really, doesn't explain, should we be doing this every day? Just once, it never said anything. I asked the person that I got it from, they said, "We have no idea."
Yeah. So Cheryl admitted that the phrasing is ambiguous. Dr. Jock or Jesse, if you have a, this is about flushing their own water systems for 15 minutes?
Should we be doing this every single day?
Is this a daily or?
So during this clean-out process, then, I would do that in the morning before you do anything until we know that the ammonia levels are basically down to where we want them and we have the drink order back. But even after the drink order, the do-not-drink order is lifted, all plumbing needs to be flushed. And it's not, it's something that's going to turn over slowly. So in my opinion, though, you're, you should always be using water in your home and making sure you don't have any stagnant parts of your home. What we reckon, what we recommend in hospitals, that any fixture that's not been used for five days be flushed.
Well, all of our fixtures get used. I'm not worried about that. So, but should we be flushing this daily then?
Yes, until we have the, the drink order lifted, the do-not-drink order lifted.
So that's going to be, just my household, that's going to be a huge amount of water over just me and my wife live there? All this water, we're going to pay for? I hate to see what my water bill's going to be in October. Who's going to, are we getting a break on that? Are we going to have to pay this exorbitant water bill from flushing every day? I need an answer to that.
Though, will you identify yourselves?
I can answer that for you.
Okay.
Water is $3.77 for 1,000 gallons. Are you going to flush more than 1,000 gallons?
I have no idea. I don't know how long this is going to last or what's going on. We just don't have a lot of answers.
One of the, the main ideas with the flush is that you want to get that hot water heater tank completely turned over once, and the estimate on those is about 70 gallons around about.
I don't have a hot water heater. I have tankless.
Okay. So then you would be looking to flush less water, but again, running, running the pipes enough to get that pipe out. Is there any other information? I want to make sure I'm saying this correctly to this gentleman.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, I'm looking for help from anyone over there, making sure that I'm getting this right.
We were just talking over some numbers. The one-inch service line, 50 PSI, might be looking at 15 gallons in that, 15 gallons a minute. So 15 gallons a minute, 15 minutes.
200 gallons. So-
By 1,000 gallons, like Rob said.
A dollar.
Come on, look at this, the sheet they gave us, and we picked up our water.
Doesn't this come off if the bill's so high?
Well, the new water rate has not gone to effect yet, so the flushing for this week and the next week.
The, the way the flyer is reading is, is trying to help you basically flush out the ammonia that's built up in your system and to bring your water back to a healthy level during this process of where we're bringing that ammonia out of the water. It's something that the utility has no control over. Again, this is not, the utility is meeting the regulations. The regulation is there's a gap. So what we're doing right now is we're putting in a treatment system to remove the ammonia so that that ammonia doesn't turn into nitrite. Now, we asking the homeowners to do their part, which is to protect their health, and how we do that, the utility can't get in your home, so we're asking you to flush your, your plumbing so that the water is, is healthy for you.
I'm not arguing that. I understand that. I just thought this would be a little bit more explanatory when they handed out at the water distribution. They had no answers. We don't know if you do it every day or just once.
We understand the concern. We'll, we'll work to get, all right, get in the line, please, if you can. We'll work to get-
My personal comment is, the water increase shouldn't happen, be to this, to us, until this situation is solved.
Well done. Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. Next comment, sir.
Yeah.
Name and address, please.
Sure. Which microphone am I talking with? This one?
That one.
Okay. My name is Bill Petullo. I'm at 49 Garfield Parkway, and over the years, I've been very supportive of this board, and I've worked with you a couple of times. But one question about the presentation that tricked in my head. You, your slide showed the dot at the source where the water comes into our system was okay. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the problem, the first step in solving problems is define the mission, define the problem. The problem is in the Williams Bay system.
Distribution system.
Distribution. Great. So we were concerned that the water aquifer was polluted. Good God, I got to sell the house. So that's not the issue. The issue is, the water coming into the system is fine, the water coming out of my tap is screwed up.
So-
Is that, is that simply put, a layman's term?
Yes and no. So let me, I'm sorry.
I'd like to find out where the problem is.
Yeah, you're right. So nitrate and nitrite are the two things that I'm nervous about as far as the, the health impacts on the people, right? At the entry point, and that's kind of pointed out right next to the, right next to the water treatment plant, is where we measure that.
And that was fine?
And that was fine.
There you go. Now it comes into the system.
However, the only other part is that the ammonia, which is not regulated, is also coming from that aquifer, though. And downstream, it's having effects. So that's why I said a yes, but, is that answer?
Well, well, once again, I, I need a specific answer. It's very, very simple. The aquifer's fine, the water coming into the Williams Bay system is good. Is that correct?
The aquifer has high ammonia in it. The aquifer is not fine.
Contributing to the problem that your system has created. Is that correct?
That biology is creating, yes.
Okay. If the water came in from the system to my faucet and bypassed Williams Bay, would I have that problem? No.
Not if you flushed your own system.
Correct. So the people on the wells are pretty much okay because the aquifer's okay. So what I'm trying to define here is, is it the Williams Bay system that created the problem? In other words, I don't know if the pipes are old or new, or if they're made of copper or lead. I don't care about any of that. The fact that it's only Williams Bay tells me that our system has caused the problem, which means our government is responsible for the safety and security of our water, and they dropped the ball. Is that a fair assessment?
I think it's kind of unfair.
I say, sir, ammonia, I, as a representative of the government, I would-
Well, Adam, is that a fair assessment?
I would say no, that we have not dropped the ball. We have the water plant chlorination expansion scheduled to be finished in November. This just didn't, didn't get done in time.
I hear some tales.
There is no-
At that moment, when that expansion is done, all ammonia will be mitigated as it enters the system, and then we will not have nitrification occurring in our pipes.
So, so, so when that's done, the Waterloo system will be fine again?
Yes.
The broken system will be fine. So the system is indeed broken?
Okay.
That's a question. I'll just leave it there.
Okay. My, the only thing I wanted to say in rebuttal is that these are really challenging problems, that there is no magic straw that goes in the ground that serves clean water to everybody. And if so, a lot of us would be out of a job up here, because this is the stuff that are really challenging problems. So I do give the utility credit for all the work that you guys have done, both at the village level, identifying the problem and taking action on it. So those, just wanted to say that in response.
Give your name and address, sir.
Hal Martin, 92 Birch Walnut. Questions I have are more basic. You had mentioned that we should remove the aerators on, does that include-
Are you talking about removing the aerators?
The, removing the aerators, what role do they have in this? First question.
By removing the aerators, you get a higher flow rate through your plumbing, and at that higher flow rate then removes natural biofilm that's in your plumbing, which is the source of the nitrification.
Describe what an aerator is for us.
Yeah. So an aerator is that little device that's on the very tip of your faucet. If you unscrew it, the aerator basically takes that steady stream and spreads it out. It aerates it, it sprays it, and actually restricts flow. So by taking that off, gives you a chance to dip it in some vinegar to clean it, but then you get a higher flow rate. If you take off all your aerators and open up all your faucets at the same time on cold, you're going to pull a high velocity through your plumbing and help reduce the amount of biofilm that's in your plumbing.
Okay. Does that include the refrigerator filter and/or any shower filters you may have?
Shower filters, yes, it would include that, or the shower heads. You can take those off. The refrigerator filters, because of how this biology is happening, it's, you know, you just replace that on your normal routine cycle. So you really can't take that refrigerator filter out. Some of them you can, but you don't really get that much of a higher velocity. If you really wanted to scrub that line, you would turn the valve off behind the refrigerator, disconnect the refrigerator, put a short Toga on there, and then dump it into a bucket. That'll clean that line coming over.
Okay. Can we use our hoses to water flowers and lawns, et cetera, to-
Absolutely.
-aid this, rather than simply running it down the drain?
Absolutely, because the, the nitrogen that's in that water would be beneficial to your plants.
Okay. Once the chlorine levels go up, are we going to be dumping a? Once the chlorine levels go up, will we need to stop watering lawns and flowers and that sort of thing?
The chlorine level actually won't change too much from what you're seeing right now, because what we're doing is we're adding a fair amount of chlorine, but most of that is basically burnt off in the process of converting the ammonia into nitrogen, nitrogen gas.
Okay.
So even though we're adding in 30 milligrams per liter chlorine, we're still going to be down to 2 milligrams per liter, much like we currently are doing. It's just that process is converting that ammonia into something less harmful.
So won't be, won't be pool water that will come out of the faucet?
No.
Okay. And the last question I have is, what happened with the rest of the tests? Now, there were a few that you said came back high nitrate, or nitrite, rather. What happened with the rest of them?
I shared, oh, excuse me. Everyone that I shared up there is all that we have so far, so we're taking more, was more taken today or tomorrow? They'll be taken tomorrow morning. So another round will be taken tomorrow morning, sent to the lab, and then the analysis should be done if expedited within 24 hours of them sampling.
Will we see that somewhere?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. How is that shared?
There was one that was under.
Yeah. Five of the six was over, the nitrate, or nitrite levels, and then, but there was one under. When, how do you guys share the results with the community?
They don't.
Hmm. Yeah. Probably a good way to post it on the webpage or something like that, that'd be a good idea.
Once results are received on these new tests, it'll all get pushed out through email alerts, your website, all the social media pages, the library, the rec department, the police department, posted at the library, posted at Village Business's post office, everywhere we can go, and then I'm sure it'll get spread very quickly through social media. You will not be getting those phone text alerts for that.
Okay, my question, though, is specifically, you know, will we know what neighborhoods have been tested and what the result for that area is?
You hear a warning.
Will we see the results by neighborhood, rather than simply, here's the numbers?
Is that information typically ambiguous on your end, or is made private?
On DNR's site?
Yeah, from the results.
So none of these would be something, like, so on the DNR website, it's generally all the compliance sampling that we have. This is, this goes well beyond compliance sampling. We're at a finer grain than what is posted there. Um, can we do it? Um, I can see if we can do that. Um, I think it's probably more efficient to probably post it locally, though. Um, I think that's his best way.
He's asking if, let's say, we draw from different streets, are we able to say results by the street it's from, or the neighborhood it's from?
Oh, so.
Or is there a privacy consideration there?
Um, so we generally work where we have identified monitoring site plans that have exact addresses that are, are linked to where the samples come from, and exact faucets and where the samples come from. So, this is a little bit different, though. Right? This goes beyond the compliance sampling. So I think it's kind of up to the community and how you guys want to post it, and if there's a privacy issue.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not asking for a specific address. For instance, Cedar Point, Cedar Point have an issue. What are the other, uh, areas around here that have been tested, and what are the results for that specific area?
Okay.
If you're gonna test them, why not share the results?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll get in.
Absolutely.
We'll, we'll get an answer and be as transparent and as specific as we can, short of giving exact addresses.
Yeah.
But yeah, I understand, the areas, zones. Absolutely, sir.
Okay, I'm done.
All right, name and address, please, sir.
Ted Mashick, 29 Johnson Terrace. Questions are, um, you say you don't monitor the chlorine levels so much, yet, this is all on the village website. In 2021.
Hold your microphone. Didn't you get closer to the mic?
In 2021, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources warned the village of Williams Bay about increasing levels, which could lead to nitrate. Now, here we are, four years later, and we're first starting to get a system that's supposed to be done in November. I'm asking, number one, is that system all of a sudden on a fast-track system because kids got sick? Also, you're, this is a, your water main, same one you had up there. You want us to start flushing our homes, but I don't see you flushing the mains. You're chlorinating these mains, and we're supposed to flush our houses, is that doing the work for you? I have several hydrants in my area, not a single one has been flushed. The other thing is, you have a lot of dead ends here. I was an equipment operator for 32 years on a sewer and water company in Illinois. Now, I don't know if Wisconsin's different, but in Illinois, dead-end mains are not allowed. You have to loop everything, so you don't have stagnant water with bacteria growth. So is this a Wisconsin thing, or is this a Williams Bay thing? Number one. Number two, if they are dead end, what is your protocol for flushing these things? They should be flushed at least once a year. I don't see hydrants being flushed at all in this village. Maybe I'm missing them? I don't see it.
Could we, could we have Public Works address the water main flushing questions first, and then we'll have DNR talk about the dead-end regulations in Illinois versus Wisconsin?
We flush water mains every spring and every fall. This flushing that we're doing right now, we are not flushing every hydrant. We're doing some velving off and strategically flushing.
Why aren't you flushing every hydrant? The whole village is contaminated.
Talk to the microphone, sir.
Why aren't you flushing every hydrant? The whole village is contaminated.
Because we're pulling it, with the velving off, we're pulling it certain directions, and flushing it out of certain hydrants. We're not flushing every hydrant, we're not operating every hydrant like we would in the spring and the fall, on a normal flushing routine.
Well, again, you have dead-end lines here. So if you're only flushing certain lines.
Dead-end lines have definitely been done, more than once.
Okay, what about the hydrant across the street from my house?
Which is?
29 Johnson Terrace. Why do I not get my water main and everybody in my community?
Johnson Terrace isn't a dead end.
It's still got a hydrant. Why isn't my main being flushed? I'm not gonna flush out my home when I still have dirty water coming into it. You yourself said, we are responsible from the Buffalo Box to our house. What about up to the Buffalo Box?
The, the flushing that they're doing is intended to pull the treated water to the ends, which then means, doesn't, they're not gonna flush every hydrant. They're flushing, they're turning over the big mains to get the treated water to the ends, so that where your tap is, is connecting into treated water, differently treated water than what was there previously.
Okay, so you yourself have stated that I should be able to smell high chlorine levels if my kitchen sink. So if I turn it on, and I don't smell the chlorine, is my getting my main flushed?
The, the smell of chlorine is a, is a tricky issue. So if you smell, um, a sharp chlorine smell, that's fresh chlorine, that's free chlorine. If you have, um, a slight swimming pool smell, those are chloramines, and that's the disinfection that we're using. But we only have that chloramine smell, that swimming pool smell, when the pH is too low. So in a properly treated system, and the, the system here, actually the pH is relatively elevated, so if our, our pH is between eight and a half and nine, and we're doing a chloramine disinfection, you shouldn't smell it.
I shouldn't smell it.
Shouldn't smell it.
Earlier you said I should.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
I could've sworn you said.
No.
The smell of chlorine coming out of your.
No.
Did he mean it's?
No.
So, okay. But we, so, but if we have the wrong, if the pH is wrong, which can happen in biofilms, where the pH is lower, then we can get a little bit of whiff of that, and we get to die in trichloramines, and, and they're, they're stinky. What we're trying to do at this point is take care of an unregulated issue. And the village is stepping up and doing above and beyond what they need to, because the codes don't say this, but they're doing it not only to protect public health, but because, uh, in public health, the primary reason for their project is for the copper corrosion. So they're actually under orders from the DNR to fix that. So by, by doing our investigation, we realized that nitrification is happening in the system, and, and not every point that we actually tested did we find nitrite elevated. So we, we see basically where there's good disinfection in the system prior to last week, that as long as that good disinfection was there, we didn't see the nitrite, because the biofilm was, was under control.
Okay, then two last questions. Number one, again, this was brought to attention in 2021, this is four years ago. Why so long to get the system up to date? And number two, are there test strips that we can pick up so we can test our own water in home?
So, could we, there was a question asked earlier about dead-end loops versus, dead ends versus loops? Is that, and how it pertains to regulation? Are either of you able to answer that question?
The, the DNR code basically says to minimize dead ends to all extent possible. It doesn't eliminate them. So where.
In the state of Wisconsin?
In the state of Wisconsin, yeah. They encourage it. Now, interestingly, though, I have gone and done corrosion investigations in communities where they put loops in, and the loops are actually worse, and we call a stagnant loop. On the very end of that loop, the water kind of comes from this way and this way, it's almost a washing machine action. Whereas on a dead end, actually you can turn it over. So in certain situations, loops are not good.
And are those dead ends flushed more frequently in this village?
And, yeah, my understanding is that there's a flushing program here, and then.
Every two years?
Twice a year, twice per year.
Twice a year.
Twice per year. Um, you may not see them doing that.
Yeah, no, judging by where they were, no, probably not. What about test strips? So we could test our own water? Or is there a facility, we can bring some of our own water to check it?
There, there are testers for chlorine, I'm not so sure about the chloramines.
Do you mean for it?
I mean, so we could drink our water. Any kind of test strips that show nitrates, so, like you got a hot tub.
Yeah, so there are, I mean, there are test strips you can buy for nitrate, but, and probably nitrite, but they're not very reliable. So I would really use it as like a presence-absence kind of test strip. If you want to know how much is in your water, it would be taking a sample, shipping it on ice to a certified lab. That is what the, this community is doing. If you're on a private well, right, and you have concerns, that might be something worth exploring, you can talk to me after about that, but the community is taking those samples. It is not as easy as like just taking your nitrate sample to the, to the county. It's more, it's a more complicated end.
I know, it's about a week turnaround, is it?
I think so, and yeah, they have to go on ice.
Right.
Sir, we're gonna, we're gonna have our chair of the Water and Sewers Committee, uh, he's been in that role since, I think, 2019, kind of talk about the timeline. And then if you could, just jump back in line if you have more questions, so that we can have, uh, some other people have an opportunity to answer, ask questions. Thank you, thank you for your questions.
Well, if I get carried away, please stop me, because I can talk about this for hours. Um, but I just want to say something, um, because this is where I learned from Jim Killian. 15,000 years ago, there were five glaciers coming down, and thanks to those glaciers, we have a beautiful lake that they depassed with it, and we enjoy that lake every day. They also, in that process, created a layer of biomass, and that's where the chlorine comes coming from. And so, we recognized that in 2020, when I became trustee in COVID, in the middle of COVID there, we created a, um, we started creating a capital improvement program. When we put that together, basically, we had the first layer together, we got the letter on, on June 30th, I think it was, '21, from the DNR saying, hey, you're in the safe zone, but we realize, we, we see that the chlorine trend, the, the ammonia trend is building in well number three. Well number three was drilled because there was ammonia in well number one, and well number two, and you just heard the levels on those. So we, we made a point, at that point, no Band-Aid policy. That ammonia is there, it's not going away. If you go farther away from Williams Bay, it becomes less, but unfortunately, we have that here in our system. We made a point saying, we're not gonna put a Band-Aid on it, we are gonna fix it. So DNR gave us a year and a half, a year and a half, to give them an answer of how we were gonna fix that. And it went through a ton of testing, uh, Dr. Jacques came involved, he had to sign off on it. Finally, we got their approval saying, this is gonna fix it, and now we start all the work on it. Design work, permits, all of that takes time. In the meantime, we are so fortunate that we, uh, we actually, the state came up with a, um, a safe drinking water loan that we applied for. We saved a boatload of money, because we got, fortunately, it was important enough for, we stayed on the priority list. We got 860,000 dollars principal forgiveness. I just want to say something here, because of all the feedback that we're getting, from some of you that we are getting here, we, this board here, is terrific. We are all your friends, we're your neighbors, we drink the same water. We're trying to do the best we can here. We started out with zero money to work on your water and sewer utility, over when we were in 2020. Nothing was done, there were no water rate increases in, for 37 years straight, nothing was done, and we are doing the best we can with what the money we have, without trying to get ahead of ourselves. We want to keep our feet on the ground, and do one step at a time, but everything takes time. So I'd just like to get that out of the way. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you, Rob, that was great.
This is the line.
We were all firing. Just following the rules. Thank you, Rob. It's good to see you.
All right.
My name's Jennifer Weigle, I'm Stephanie's neighbor on Highland, and, um, from the presentation, I gathered that the high levels of nitrite, the 2.5, was found on Tuesday, correct?
Tuesday.
Yes, but we didn't get the no-drink, no-brush-teeth until Thursday, and some didn't get that text until Friday.
So.
Okay, third, but I, I know some people who didn't get the, the text until Friday. So I'm just wondering why, and maybe there's a new protocol we can put into place, that even if there's one test, that, that order goes out right away until it's discovered why and where?
Yeah, great questions, all great questions. Um, Tuesday is when we found, the DNR found out about the nitrite, high nitrite test. So what did we do? We wanted to take a lot of extra samples, just to see like, where is this in the distribution system? To figure it out, like, the extent of the contamination. And before we blasted out to the whole group, we worked with the utility, we worked with the lab to expedite the samples, and we wanted, as soon as those results came back, that's when the do-not-drink was, was sent by me Wednesday night. So we waited basically that, that full 24 hours to get the additional samples back. I sent out the do-not-drink the Wednesday night of last week, and then I think that the village sent it out the next morning. So, but we're talking, I mean, all of us were up till probably, I don't know, I sent it at probably 8:00 PM. Um, so.
So I.
So Wednesday night at social media, so, so there.
I know a lot of people who didn't see it until Thursday, yeah.
It's hard, yeah, this is, this is a hard thing.
Right.
Like I said, it was probably 8 o'clock before I got it to the village.
Okay, and then secondly, if we are not supposed to drink, and we shouldn't brush our teeth with it, is it really, from a scientific standpoint, safe to shower and bathe? If somebody could explain that?
Yeah, so nit, nitrite and nitrate don't go through your skin, so you're not gonna be absorbing it in your skin when you shower, and, I mean, even if you, yeah, you're not gonna, it's not gonna get in, it's too big of a molecule to fit in the steam to get inhaled. Um, and even if you swallow a little bit of water while you're showering, it's really not, like, relative, the amount that's, we're worried about from a risk perspective.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
If I, if I may answer the first question from the village's standpoint, late afternoon is when the village was made up.
You're after we're all.
Uh, Jim, I think that the line is gonna be back there, is what they're saying. And everyone slide down, and then we'll get Jim in at the end there. The, the village was notified late Wednesday afternoon of the positive nitrite tests. At that point, we were under guidance by the DNR that we could not release a order wide to the public until we had wording of that order, um, very basically gone over by them and, and approved by them. In that meantime, we scheduled an emergency village board meeting, and that's when we approved the $100,000 of emergency funding from the water reserves to be allocated for the emergency response. We also drafted a letter and were, had our finger on the button, ready to release our do-not-drink order the moment we had the thumbs up from the DNR that we could legally do so. Um, uh, we had multiple members of the village staff stay late, uh, till past 9:00 PM, and when we finally were able to push that order out, and that's the fastest timeline that the village was able to, to respond in this, and I, I apologize, and I know that the county orders did not, text messages didn't go out until later, and then they were also buggy and problematic. The village was not in control of how those were worded or sent out, um, and, um, it's just, now it's a known issue of how buggy those can really be, so, um, but just.
Once you enter town.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Ms. Moore, yeah, so it was geofenced, meaning that your GPS is giving data, and once you got close enough to us, or were just close enough to it, is when your phone would receive the alert. So I just wanted to clarify that. We can move on to your question now, ma'am, thank you.
I'm Sue Shanahan, 101 Healy. Um, my daughter is visiting us, she has a two-month-old. She's been watching the bottles in bottled water and everything. Can she put them in the dishwasher, or should she continue washing with bottled water?
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess I would recommend, maybe in that case, like, to, you can wash them in the dishwasher, but rinse them off with some bottled water, you know, before, before filling them with formula, or whatever they're gonna fill them with, just, you know, babies are the most sensitive to this risk, so to be extra precautious for babies, I would say.
So would you just wash them with bottled water, then?
I mean, I, you know, it depends on what's easier, right? If you have a stack of them, and, you know, you wanna get the, like, clean the germs off.
Yeah.
Right, but then, before you put the water in, just, just pour a little bottled water in, and.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Using our dishes and plates and.
Yeah, that is totally fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Shanahan, sorry.
Good evening. My name's Larry Capon, 40 Highland Street.
40 Highland Street is well represented here.
Um, I have several questions. Uh, when we picked up our water, uh, we were probably one of the first people to pick it up on Thursday afternoon. We didn't get a flush sheet. So how do I get a flush sheet?
Flush sheet.
And I think a lot of people, I've heard other people behind...
Yeah, you're talking about the notification, the sheet of paper, the...
Says how you're supposed to flush.
Okay, so the information is on the village website, and it pushed out on the social media platforms. We could maybe try to photocopy one here in the background for you, and get you one if you wanna leave here tonight with one.
Okay. That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, they weren't being handed out until Friday, that's when the chlorine after, was actually injected into the system. And we got word from Public Works to start getting that flushed order out. So, if you had picked up on Thursday, you would not have gotten it on Thursday.
Yeah, we were coming in from Illinois Thursday afternoon, and as soon as we got into Walworth County, we got the notification. It was, you know, pretty surprising. Uh, so I'm saying, we were coming in from Illinois, we didn't get the push notification. Thursday early, we got it Thursday afternoon, and we drove into Walworth County. So, that worked very well. My next questions have to do with, uh, the dead-end mains. Now, I know, for privacy purposes, we can't talk about the name of the person, but were these babies on a dead-end main?
I have no information about where they lived.
Yes.
Okay. So, talking about the earlier questions, we were trying to get at the source of what possibly could be the problem. And it looks like maybe dead-end mains are a problem. Is the village thinking about doing something about dead-end mains to solve this problem in a little bit longer term?
I'm Doug Snyder, I'm the village engineer. First thing we're doing right now is we're adding enough chlorine to the water to destroy the source of food. Now, Public Works does flush twice a year, and they have this week, at least once, flushed all the dead-end mains. So, dead-end mains are part of a problem, but if properly maintained, they work just fine. And they will be properly maintained, but first of all, we're getting the source of ammonia out of the system. We're destroying it at the water drinking, drinking water plant. We're superchlorinating at the drinking water plant to get rid of the source of ammonia.
Well, I, talking earlier, there was a gentleman that talked about no, um, dead-end mains in Illinois. My brother's a civil engineer that specializes in water distribution, and, uh, first question, he asked me when I told him we had our problem, he says, do you have dead-end mains? And I said, yes. And he says, you gotta fix that.
Not all, not all the sites that were failed were on dead-end mains.
Okay. But I'm just saying that that was his recommendation. The other thing I heard is that we have three sources of wells. Two of them have a lot of ammonia, and one of them is pretty good. It sounded like the two wellheads that have ammonia problems are shallower. Is there any plans to take those deeper, to maybe get into less ammonia water?
First of all, the wells, right now, have very similar concentrations of ammonia. Whether shallow or deep, it's geologically, we're in an area that's gonna have ammonia.
Okay. But I heard that there was, and saw, there was a difference.
There's one that's, uh, four fifths of what the other ones are. It's still above the limit of what doctors recommending for a limit. It's gonna need to be treated. The best thing we can do is treat them all at the drinking water plant.
The chlorification process that's gonna come online, November's the step, I'm wondering if these deeper wells would be also a fixed, longer-term solution, the, also, the, um, circulating and getting rid of the, the dead-end mains.
Right now, 85, or 83% of your drinking water is coming from that deep supply. The other 17% is coming from one of the two shallow wells. And we are currently adding the ammonia, or adding the chlorine at the plant to treat, very similar to what's gonna be done in November. So, on a temporary basis, we are using liquid chlorine, and a lot of it, to produce the same results you're gonna see at the end of November. We're hoping that after the sampling tomorrow, this do not drink water order can be lifted.
Okay, well, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And then, uh, Tim, you slide down, we'll kinda keep everyone, so we don't have any accidental cuts.
Jim Killian, 91 Potawatomi, Williams Bay. Thank you, trustees, for your service at this difficult time. Having sat up there myself for a number of years, I appreciate your service at this critical time. A gentleman, uh, earlier, talked about flushing the lines by opening, uh, fire hydrants throughout the village. I would second that. I actually sent a communication to the entire village board a few days ago about that, and I never received a response. I support the recommendation to flush all water lines in everybody's residential unit, but I would only recommend asking residents to do that when the solution is imminent. In other words, sending out an announcement that would say, tomorrow, we expect to be able, to have you be able to use your water pending test results. To just send out a notification to flush lines, and I, I forget what day I received it, but I believe it was Friday or Saturday. What day was it? Friday. Okay, so I'm supposed to flush. I own two condo units that are connected, so there's a total of 20 lines. Two of them are commodes, so I do know that they get flushed regularly. So, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, I'm supposed to flush for 15 minutes, all of these lines, and I don't know where the end is in sight. So, personally, first of all, my background is, I'm a retired hospital executive, but I was a microbiologist and a chemist prior to that. So, 50 years back here, I'm still remembering some things. It just doesn't make sense to me to ask people to start flushing until you know the solution is imminent. And the greatest amount of water is in the water mains, which could be flushed by opening the hydrants. The amount of water that is between the water main and the road before your residence and in your residential pipes is minuscule in comparison to the volume of water that's in the water mains. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think Doug had something to say, uh...
Yeah, Jim, if I can respond to that, we actually waited to start the flushing until we had a supply of chlorinated water. And that was very early on Saturday morning, when we had that supply, and we're producing that supply from that day forward, before we started flushing the mains the way that we are. And we're taking total and free chlorine readings at the end of the flushing to make sure that we got it there.
Okay, thank you. Now, be three, three questions...
I'll be kind.
And then we'll get you back in line, because I know...
Hi, my name is Tim Hallis, I live at 134 Elmhurst Court. Just a clarifying question. So, the deep, the source of our water is good, correct? So, there's no problem with the wells?
The wells have a source of ammonia.
Right.
Otherwise, they're fully compliant, actually, they are fully compliant.
Okay. So, it's, it's not like we have to go look for a new source of water?
Correct.
Okay. Number two, well, I don't know if it's multi... Well, number three, if I'm understanding it, is going to go offline at some point in time?
To have a new well pump put in it, yes.
Okay. So, wells three, or two and one, will supply our village water, and we shouldn't have any issues, correct?
Correct. We'll just increase the chlorine dosage...
Okay.
...to produce the same end result at the entry point.
Okay. So, my question is, and you did provide the answer, or the information here that I'm going to do, Doug, um, we put hydrochloride, is that in the water supply right now?
Sodium chloride.
Or prior to, prior to this incident?
Yes, we were always adding chlorine.
Okay, so if that's chlorine in the water, and we've been chlorinating it, why do we have the issue?
I'll try and keep it short. In parts of the water system where water age gets high, it's stagnant, whether it's a dead-end main, or a home that's not using much water, then that chlorine residual gets chewed up by naturally forming biofilm. And then, once the chlorine is gone, then the bacteria in the biofilm have a party. They, they use the ammonia that's present in the water. So, the idea behind the treatment is that we get rid of the ammonia, even with the ammonia gone, then if our disinfection residual drops, there's no ammonia there for the bacteria to create the nitrite.
Oh, good. I think this is why I flunked organic chemistry, and I'm not in med school.
It's not a one plus one equals two.
No. No, so that's, that's, you know, as you go through this, and you look at the information and try to get to, you know, get the information and try to understand it, it's all over the place. So, if you're chlorinating the water, why do you have the issue? Okay? So, we'll leave that. Uh, and then my last question, Jess, is you had statistics up through, at the end of July. Are there statistics for August?
For nitrate testing?
Yeah, you put up, you put up the slide that had, you know, dates, last reading was July 30th. So, is there something available for August?
Um, so, for the department, for anything compliance sampling, so, like, if it was quarterly, that, what were we taking for nitrate for?
Yearly.
Oh, yearly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly. So, if, if the requirement is by the department for Williams Bay to take a quarterly nitrate sample, they would take that sample, they would send it to a lab, that lab puts it into our database, everybody can see all the data that we've ever had for, till the beginning of time.
Okay.
So, when, in certain circumstances like this, where we're kind of like investigating an issue, where it's not a compliance sample taken from a compliance point, that's a little bit different. Where, like, some of the data isn't always just entered right into our database, because it's not taken from a compliance point. So, um, so that's where we kinda have to work in collaboration with the group here, of how that data's gonna get to everybody, and we can show that data.
So, there were no measurements from Jul-, the end of July until when everybody...
That was when the quarterly sample was done, I believe, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so that was, that was the last time the compliance sample was taken. And those were low, right?
Right.
So, that was part of the issue, that nothing was flagged by it.
So, sometime between the end of July and August, we developed...
I think if you, if you took another compliance sample from the entry point, it'd probably be low today.
What about the outline?
That's the difference.
That, see, that's it.
That's the part that's not captured by the compliance sampling. So, that's the, the additional work that this group has had to do, is really kind of diving into the distribution, finding things that we would not normally look for, because it's, it's being created within the distribution system.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Hallis.
Good questions.
Hi, John Ryan, 37 Humboldt Parkway. Just a quick question, if you have an RO system, will that mitigate the hazard?
It's a good question. Um, I'm not a treatment expert, I don't know if anybody wants to take this one, okay?
I'll take it. As long as your RO membrane is good, so if the recommendations are replace it every year, and you're doing that, then generally, you find that the RO membranes do remove nitrate down to very, very low levels, including nitrite. So, basically, RO takes everything out. Uh, but if you look at it, the membranes are about 98% efficient, so about 2% makes it through.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I add to that, though? Was that, the one thing to add to that was that the elevated chlorine levels can damage the membrane. And when I was, I had this conversation with the local Culligan person that you guys have here. And he was mentioning that, that the membrane for the RO units can get damaged with high use of, or with the high concentrations of chlorine. So, that was part of the reason why, when you got the notice, it says, like, don't try to treat for it yourself and manage it yourself, was part of the reasons, not just to use the RO units, because it could damage your RO, RO unit from elevating the chlorine levels. So, that's part of the reason that that went out that way. Does that help, is that...
And that's, that elevated...
Go ahead, if you got another one.
But it is, if you have a good filter and everything, it is good, it's safe to drink water from a RO system.
Nitrate, nitrite, uh, it would remove both of those things, yes.
Yeah, and most RO systems have a carbon block filter ahead of them, that would remove chlorine. But the key is that you have to maintain that system. So, if they say, change that carbon block filter every three months, do it. If you haven't done it, then there is no guarantee that you're gonna be protected.
Okay, because I know a lot of my neighbors have RO systems, and I just wanted to confirm with, okay?
Generally speaking, they should be protected.
Reverse osmosis.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Josh Root, I live at 405 Smythe Drive. The DNR warned in 2021 about rising ammonia levels. After that, was downstream monitoring increased? And if so, to what frequency? And if not, why not?
I don't have that, Dave, do you have that off the top of your head? If we don't have any? Well, it's an unregulated contaminant, which is part of the issue, right? It's not the fact that, you know, as somebody in the drinking water and groundwater world, I'd love to monitor for a lot of different things. However, you know, through the Safe Drinking Water Act, it's really identified certain contaminants that we can monitor for and that we have requirements for. Unfortunately, ammonia is not really one of those things. And it's not even just the ammonia itself that we're worried about, it's how it manifests downstream, right? So, that's, that was part of the reason for the study, and as it relates to a lot of the lead and copper issues. So, that was part of the reason why it was flagged as being a high issue. And that was part of the reason why I think you guys were, were going through the process of upgrading the treatment plan.
Right, so, the, the logic is, if the ammonia is high, then downstream, there could be a nitrite issue, right?
Right.
So, given that that warning was issued, was there no thought to saying, hey, we should monitor whether there's a health issue?
These are good ques-, these are tough questions to answer. There's no question about it.
So, so the answer is no, there was no additional monitoring downstream?
I'd have to go look if there was additional monitoring.
There were no requests from the DNR to do any downstream testing?
Or recommendations.
I didn't hear the question. Can you come down and ask into a microphone? But, um, if you could step up next. Yep, you're, yeah, you want to, okay, if you're, if you're gonna let her, go ahead.
My comment is in the future, my, my comment is in the future, let's start testing the outlines, so this doesn't happen again.
Annalisa Prohuska, 109 Clover Street. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, you really brought the community together in our time of crisis, everyone that's helping. That only happens in a small community, I believe. I did receive a letter. I received a letter in the mail today that the water department wants to come and inspect on our property. Is everyone getting these letters, or just certain neighborhoods? And my other question is, will we ever stop fluoride, adding fluoride to the water?
I, I would say the letter you got would be from HydroCorp, it'll be on village letterhead.
Yes.
But it'll say HydroCorp, yes, that is a cross connection control inspection.
Is everyone in the village getting these letters?
Yes, every property in the village, residential and commercial. They, it's done in cycles. So, there's a group is sent out at a time, the inspector's here, does the inspections. It's, it's cycles, everybody doesn't get them at the same time.
What are they looking for?
Cross connections.
Okay.
It's, it's plumbing deficiencies, is what they're looking for.
Okay, thank you. And the fluoride question, whoever can answer that?
I can answer that to you. So, actually, we had that scheduled for tonight, but I took it off the agenda, and it's gonna be a separate discussion, probably in the next, um, meeting, village board meeting.
The fluorid?
Excuse me?
The fluorid?
Yeah, because some people are concerned about that, and I want it to be an open discussion. It's gonna be no attachments to anybody, so everybody do their own research, and we'll have an open discussion on it, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and as trustee Uman said, the agenda tonight was condensed a lot to make time for this public forum, and that was one of the items that was removed, pushed to two weeks from now, um, to make room for that, so... Sir? Yep, step on up, please.
Mark Nolan, 627 Jackson Parkway. I was wondering, on the certain types of plumbing systems, was that a problem? You said that. You said that with, with the nitrates and the biofilm and everything, was that public works or was that residential plumbing systems?
I was describing the residential plumbing systems.
Is it matter of what category of pipes corrugated, I mean, galvanized, copper, PEX, PVC?
The biofilm will, will colonize all surfaces, but generally speaking, you're going to have a worse problem in copper services because the copper is needed for that first step to make the hydroxyl amine and zinc's already in the water, so then that goes to nitrite. So, generally speaking, copper services should have more issues than a PEX, PVC, or even a lead service for that matter, but there aren't any lead services in this community.
Okay, and is it suspended in the water or is it all of, all of these nitrates and biofilm and everything, is it always flowing? Is it suspended in the water or is it always dropping into the bottom of either? Hot water seems to be a real issue, that hot water tanks, is that also correct?
All piping surfaces will have it and it's, it's coating. So, biofilm is a coating on the surface, so think of that as a slime like, like plaque on your teeth. So, that's what biofilm is. The biofilm sloughs, then it becomes a suspended bacterium, but then that's the chlorine zaps it, but the chlorine really can't get into the biofilm itself. So, if you were to cut open a pipe and feel it, if it's slippery, that is a nitrifying biofilm.
Okay.
We've seen that thousands of times.
Is it a more problem with a standing water tank, dropping to the bottom of the tank? Is that what I understand?
Correct.
You want to flush that bottom tap out more than worry, not so much, but you still worry about the cold water, but it, it's more of a hot water issue?
It, it doesn't matter what your, where your water's coming from, you should be flushing the bottom of that tank at least every three months. This community, I would do it more often.
Okay, is it a leaching problem into your skin versus temperature of cold, hot, warm, when you take a, whatever, wash, shower, bath? Is it leach? Does it seep into your, can, possibility of leach?
No, it's not going to go through your skin.
It does not?
No.
At all, okay. How about the, all the water towers and the thousands, hundreds of thousands of gallons? And I, I think there's at least two, maybe more, do those have to be completely flushed? So, there's no residue in the long term?
There's four towers, according to Doug here, and we are turning them over to get the chlorine, the higher chlorine residual in there to get rid of the ammonia. So, eventually, they'll be cleaned, but at this point, we're just getting the, the ammonia down by turning them over.
And will all these documents be available somewhere? The village or DNR will have?
Yeah, we have it shared, so we'll, we'll get all that up on the website and share it through social media as well.
Okay, I guess I will do, thank you.
Good questions, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jack Oregan, 343 Forest Drive. So, my question regards the actual source of the ammonia. Like you were saying that it's a naturally occurring thing to some extent, but the likelihood that it's really natural, right, it's, it's agricultural source that it's based, right? Most of it? That would, wouldn't that make us an incredible outlier here from, to have a problem like this?
There are other systems in the state where we've seen ammonia actually higher than this and at once actually at a state-owned facility. So, the ammonia comes, so basically the glacier came along, created the Great Lake, the lakes here, created Great Lakes too, but created the lake that's here. And then as it plowed its path, anything in its way was either lifted up and shoved to the side or pushed forward. So, we have buried logs or buried organic matter. There are spots, as you go up to Door County, where you drill a well, you drill through a log down 50, 100 feet. So, we have these buried seams of biomass that are just deposited by the glacier, well, 10,000, 15,000 years ago, of rotting. Under anaerobic conditions, the bacteria can only use that organic carbon through fermentation and when they try to ferment it, much like making beer or, you know, the fermentation process, what's left is ammonia. So, ammonia accumulates because it can't be used anaerobically by bacteria. So, it's decaying organic matter. There's an area kind of southeast from here where we've seen ammonia at 10. So, it's buried organic matter. If it was fertilizers, we would see it as nitrate because the bacteria, so basically when we put ammonia, antitammonia or whatever, you know, ammonia fertilizer on, on top of that soil, it lays there, the bacteria that are in that soil, they have oxygen, the soil itself has copper and metals in it, they quickly convert that to nitrate in the soil. So, most of the wells that are ag impact that really have nitrate, not ammonia.
So, we, so we should have had this problem from the dawn of Williams Bay then? Because if it was naturally occurring?
When well three was drilled back in 1999 to solve the high ammonia problems in well one and two, there wasn't any ammonia there. But because of how the geology is here, I mean, we're drilling a hole down on the ground and we're asking the earth to give us water and as we pump out of that well, it has, that water has to be replaced. So, in some parts of the state, we have these nice flowing aquifers where it's moving really fast and other parts, it's a stagnant bowl. So, as we pump that stagnant bowl, we got fresh rainwater coming in, but it's not moving anywhere. We pump that stagnant bowl, we're going to push that ammonia down and that's what happened here. So, well three's ammonia is because we're pulling the shallow ammonia down. We could move over a mile and drill another well, we'd have low ammonia in that deep well, but eventually it's going to come back within 20 years and we'll be talking about it again. To drill a, a three to $5 million facility that's only lasting for 20 years, it's not really economic. So, what we're doing is we're removing the ammonia at the source by doing partial breakpoint chlorination.
Okay, because I, because I understand what you're saying, but every case I was looking at online, and I'm not an expert, spent a, you know, an hour or whatever, every other case that's, that's been publicized is due to agriculture, so.
It's usually the nitrate, not, not the ammonia.
Right.
Because ammonia is not ever tested. Ammonia is not regulated, so ammonia is not tested. So, if you're not looking at the ammonia, you don't know where the nitrate comes from. Generally speaking, when I see high nitrate, ammonia's not there. The bacteria are having fun with the ammonia and we don't even see it.
So, you're saying like the natural cycles that would absorb the ammonia doesn't have time because it's getting sucked in because in nature, ammonia should balance with plants?
The environment that, where the ammonia is generated and as it's down in the aquifer is anaerobic, that, that process of nitrification requires oxygen, so there's no oxygen there. And even if there was oxygen there, they have a real hard time because there isn't any copper. So, that's, that's why I went through the science behind it to, to give you a better understanding and it's, it's a difficult topic. I, obviously, I didn't do a very good job of explaining it because it's, but it's, it's a, it's a difficult topic and it's why even national experts don't understand it. What I'm talking about, nitrification in this cycle and getting into the metals, you're not going to find national experts actually getting to that level. The only time they get to that level is when we're talking about recirculating aquaculture systems where we're growing bacteria to actually do that, so.
So, so you're 100% certain that, that the ammonia is almost all naturally occurring?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Bill Placinsky, 91 Potawatomi Road, I have a question for Mr. Umans. You mentioned in your remarks earlier about proposed, proposed infrastructure repair. You talked about $800,000 grant loan, et cetera. What is happening with that? As far as, where is that $800,000 being spent?
No, actually, actually what I was referring for was the principal forgiveness part.
Okay.
So, that's something we, we actually borrowed 4.4.
It has, has any, has any work?
But the 860, we don't have to pay back.
Using that, okay, not, not so much the money, but the work being done. So, so what work was being done since we got this 860,000?
No, 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 so you kind of put things in perspective.
Yeah, I wish you would.
There's a lot of work that needs to get done. For example, I'll give you a good example. Well number three has a pump that has been going, the last time it was served, all the, basically all the water comes from well number three. That pump was last served 2007.
Okay.
And has been running nonstop. Nothing lasts forever. It had to come out.
Okay.
It has to come out and is being replaced as soon as the, we get the go-ahead on the new equipment. The whole plant is being updated with new injection, chlorine injection equipment, new pumps, new everything on the plant. When that's all go-ahead in November, we're going to do well number three. We can't do well number three because then we have to activate well number one and two. So, basically, we were living off well number three and really didn't have a good backup system.
Okay.
So, now the whole idea is we get that out of the way and we have three wells that we can depend on and switch back and forth.
Prior, prior to this, prior to this issue happening, this whole water issue, what we're talking about today happening, about a month or so, two, three weeks, a month ago, prior, prior to, I got, I got a letter from the village saying, "Your, your water rates are going to increase by X amount" because, as I understood the letter to read, we have, because for infrastructure repair. I also, I also remember the letter saying something about, "We have some technology out there that's nineteen, from the 1930s." Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, so what we did is when we put the capital improvement project together, we decided we're going to put everything on a list.
All right.
That needs to get fixing here. The water tanks, we had a lime reactor that was 10 years overdue that needed to be fixed.
Understood.
That's on my letter, that you're referring to my letter.
Yes.
And then we decided to sort it in a sensible way and then certain things have to be done in a certain sequence, just like I said.
Understood.
I can't take well number three out unless well one, one and two work perfectly fine.
So, what I'm?
That kind of a thing. So, after we get this done, then we're going to concentrate on the water mains. We already have done a bunch of them. People were talking about dead-end water mains, they will be addressed. We did one on Clover and Williams Street. That one is now not on dead-end anymore. So, we kind of do what we were the most pressureist and were the most, where we get the most bang for our bucks and so, but some, some projects we had to do because of the DNR, because, because of the Department of Transportation, like the Alcorn Road, we have new water mains. That was, was done because they, we did, we didn't want to put a new road, a water mains that are from 1936. And we had a big, everybody remember that we had a water boil order because of a big water break, main breakdown there. The next one that is coming up is East West Geneva Street. That's $4 million. We got to find the money for that because those water mains are from 1936. That's all going to be a new road and the water main, the 75 is about, years is about the expected lifetime that you can get out of them and we will, by the time we get to some of them, most of them will be 20, 100 years old.
So, what I, what I'm, if I'm correct in here, what I'm hearing is there is a plan in place to fix, fix, repair, remediate, refurbish, remodel?
Yes.
The town's water?
Yes, so we do one project at a time?
Yes, understood. That, that, I have no problem, I don't have a problem with one problem at a time, just so that it's being addressed.
So, we have long-term projects, what is $30 million to, just to give you that idea?
Understood.
Right. And then after that, we have the water mains and the water mains can be a million dollars per mile and we got 20, 20 miles to fix. So, we're going to be there well beyond May.
As, as long as the infrastructure is being addressed, as long as the infrastructure is being addressed is my concern. Thank you.
But I say everybody, I say this to everybody and when I start, when we, when we finish a project here, I breathe a little easier.
Yes.
All of you should breathe a little easier too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Church, 20 Colley Street, Williams Bay. I want to thank the board for being here late and letting everyone say their questions and the DNR, DHS, thank you for being here. I, on behalf of the restaurants and businesses I love in the bay too, I'm wondering if there's a long-term plan in place to reimburse them for what they've spent on bottled water so far? Just want to encourage the board to put that on a long-term plan. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Sherry Thomas. Live on Highland Street and I have two questions. We grow a lot of vegetables at our home and I'm wondering if the vegetable gardens that are watered with this high nitrate water are causing the vegetables to be unsafe to eat. We noticed this year that there's low fruit production on the plants and bad tasting fruit.
So, the nitrite in the water is not going to hurt the plants. Plants actually naturally have nitrite in them.
But high.
And it's high, but it's not like at a crazy level that we're going to harm the plants or anything. And your body actually has a better way of addressing nitrate, in nitrate, when it's coming from food because that's how we are supposed to see it, or like it is something that we normally see in our diet. So, it being in the, on the plants or even if a little bit got in the plants, it's not going to be a problem from a dietary perspective. I don't think this is anything to do with the, you know, the fruits being small.
I have looked it up and it does say that the, if anyone else has noticed, I'm not sure, but it does say that the plants are more leafy with less fruit when there's high nitrates in the water.
Yeah, there's high nitrite though, not nitrate. And there is actually a difference in how the plants take them up and stuff, so yeah, sorry, I can't help with that.
The other thing is, is that I've noticed driving by and I think it's great that we're doing this water distribution. The only problem that I have with it is that this water is sitting out in the sun and the chemicals that are being produced from the sun going through the plastic are not good for your body to drink. I would request that there be some tarps put over the water out there, which really wouldn't be a hard thing to do, just to throw tarps on top of them. It just like gives me the chills when I see it sitting there in the hot sun.
Yeah, your point's well taken. I know Chief could speak to this, that the water is kept indoors up until the moment that it is out, so it's going to be out there for only the four-hour, now three-hour window and it is later in the afternoon, 3:00 PM now, 4:00 PM onward. But your point's well taken and it's something that we can, we can work to address, so thank
My name is Marcella Kelstrom. I live at 56 Valley Street and I'm also a manager, a green grocer. I'd like to point out a couple of things. I appreciate the water being received to the residents, given to the residents. I don't like the plastic that's going around. Family of five is going to have five cases of plastic going around. That's absolutely crazy. Can we do something, get the water in a different way than small bottles, number one. Number two, concerned about our business. We were never approached. We have to buy ice, we can't sell lattes, we can't do a lot of things, we have to buy water to make soup, et cetera. Our business was never contacted as far as what's going to be done for businesses versus Anybody have a comment about the plastic?
I'm sorry, what the, the question is, can we get it in a, so the water that was donated to us was in plastic bottle form. That's a, it's a beggars can't be choosers situation and that's just how we're getting the water. I don't, short of getting a water truck here and ever having everyone bring their own glass bottles, I don't see an easy way of getting around the plastic and we apologize for the inconvenience. That's just, that's the mode that, that is economical and, and logistically possible at this point. Anyone else want to?
Okay, what about the businesses being contacted and being helped? As a business, we don't even get water for our customers. We have to buy water that has never been addressed yet.
The businesses and residents were all alerted with the same alert. It was just the critical care communities, our hospital, our school and our two elderly senior citizen care facilities that were given special prioritization with us providing water to them and that was from guidance of the DNR. Chief, did you have any, I don't, I think I covered there, but.
So, businesses will not be given any water for our customers. We have to provide it ourselves. We have to provide it ourselves.
I appreciate the question. Our main focus was the residents and making sure that they had enough water. Now I've spoken to a couple of businesses today and we have some ideas moving forward and we'll be contacted tomorrow and we'll see what the next steps are.
One more question is, as far as elderly residents who don't have access to or don't know how to get on website, were they somehow notified about the water, not drinking the water?
Yes, well, we had multiple people from HHS and we were also relying on neighbors being good people. And so we had a lot of word of mouth going around. HHS I know was reaching out to some of their clients and making sure that they had the appropriate communication and if they needed water, we were able to get it to them.
I believe the information was being spread through the Meals on Wheels program also and just word of mouth. The library was proactively contacting citizens that they knew to be more tech in the dark on the, from that perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Rosenthal, I'm at 440 Park Lane. And just from the social media context, first of all, I want to just commend everybody, you guys are doing great with communications and everything. It's amazing. Some people have asked if there's any possibility we can get additional recycling pickup if we're using so many bottles because the GFL cans are getting overflow, going out into the streets. And also my other concern, I'm one of those people that are keeping my neighbors contacted, asking if they need water, things like that, especially the elderly. I do live in Baywood Heights and there's a larger population of people who are retired and they might not have that information. But one thing that came up from my neighbors was if there's consideration for the seasonal residents and how to get their houses flushed, or will they have continued issues without purging their lines? Something to think about if we have so many people that this, let's say it goes until November, we're probably not going to have those seasonal residents, if there's another option to be able to pull that water through their houses. Thanks.
Lilon Morundy, 624 Cedar Point Drive. And I just had a question about transparency, just so there is trust going forward. In Prairie View, there was a resident who communicated via Facebook, August 20th, that her levels of nitrate were 10 times the safe level and nitrite was 15 times the safe level. And it didn't, you know, and then it was a week until the village communicated that to the rest of the community. So I understand there had to be like an official, do not drink the water, but there could have been an unofficial, we are investigating this and if you so choose, you may want to err on caution. That, that wasn't communicated in the village.
Yeah, I've heard anecdotally of residents telling, having at-home tests done, none of that information was communicated to the Walworth County Department of Health, our village, Walworth County. And I understand it was a private Facebook message group, so it's not one that the village monitors, but word of mouth could have been better. There was no letter sent to, to the village, the county, the Board of Health or anything like that, unfortunately.
I think she did, but she said the village came out, tested the water, said she could drink it. It wasn't until she involved the Walworth Health and Human Services that they further dug into it and said not to. So I think there, and that's where I'm saying like, you know, the transparency and trust, if there's a he said, she said, I don't know who to believe.
Okay.
And then as far as there's talk about, we only need to worry about the nitrates, but we did our own home test in the last day or two and the nitrates came up high as well. So the complete negation of concern for nitrate and
Did you send that sample to a certified lab?
We, we did send it out, yet we haven't gotten those results.
Those results are going to be what to base your actions on. Because again, those, like over-the-counter at-home test is trying to give you like a rapid response, like pass, fail. So it's detecting something there, but I would really not rely on the number it's telling you.
Okay. And then as far as what the, another woman said earlier, as far as can the village monitor ongoing these ammonia levels and communicate that, is there a way to get a formal commitment from the board in terms of what that will look like, what the communication will look like, you know, the detail of that versus just kind of a, you know, I think, I think this is such the case that we need a formal way to.
I could, I could check here with our Water and Sewer Committee Chair, Rob Umans, but what we'd be looking to do to just to test that the new ammonia system, the ammonia mitigation system is working, is be taking tests at the village level in the distribution system. And we're doing that, we're doing more, our own testing here tomorrow to get that do-not-drink order offline. Did you need to add something, Doug?
No, just, I just wanted to let you know the tests are being taken tomorrow to find out what the ammonia, the nitrite and the nitrate are, I believe at nine different locations.
Okay. And then would you expect that it's reasonable that that is an, there's a, there's a certain cadence for that monitoring and communication, not just like, okay, we tested it tomorrow, we're good to go, but knowing that we are on this glacier and this is an ongoing issue to have a certain expectation on, on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask our Water Sewer Chair to include an agenda item to maybe have a plan for distribution level testing on a regular schedule going forward.
That would be great. I think just to be vigilant before, you know,
And this would be, this is non-regulated.
Someone's in the hospital, that shouldn't be the alert.
And this would be above and beyond the minimum regulations from the DNR.
Yep, understood.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Quinlan, 545 Free Church Drive. I'll make this quick. What is the most effective way to do the in-home flushing, like all of them at once or one faucet at a time?
Without knowing your plumbing system, how it's laid out, the easiest thing to do would be to take off the aerators and do all your cold fixtures at once. And once those are all done, you're getting good cold water in and I recommend putting a white solo cup underneath the faucet and you can see the color. If there's any color there, like that first blast, you might see some color. Once the color disappears on all your faucets, go over to the hot and do the hot.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that we did cold and then hot.
Yeah, do, do one type of water at a time.
Oh, okay. All right.
Because you can't really do hot and cold at the same time, you're going to get half and half.
Well, the hot becomes cold eventually.
The idea is that you're going to do all cold and then all hot.
Okay.
And I always recommend to do it, flush it until you no longer see any color. And that's what we're looking for, because the biofilm, when it sloughs, it's going to give a little color.
All right, so it's hard to do the whole house at the same time if you've got an upstairs and a downstairs. So if you do like a couple at a time?
So you could go to one restroom, take the aerator off the tub or take the showerhead off, take the aerator off the sink, start, start the water at the sink flowing cold, flush the toilet and turn the shower on. You're going to get about eight gallons a minute.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, so we're going to need to be updating that handout with this new guidance from Dr. Jock today and we'll be get that on the website and through social media. Thank you, doctor. We appreciate all the better information that we're getting now. Please, ma'am.
Hi, Carol Martin, 92 Birch Walnut. Somebody asked this question, but nobody answered it. We live in an area that has maybe three houses off-season with water. Are we worried about all the houses that don't get flushed in our area going forward?
Imagine they're getting the same flush notice. We should make sure we get a flush notice maybe in their door for when they come back.
Yeah, or as soon as possible before they leave because a lot, Florida.
Well, regardless of whether they're there full-time or part-time, these part-time homes, regardless of this issue, always have problems. I mean, we've, we've investigated thousands of buildings. We always see problems when the building is not used, which is why when we reopened everything after the pandemic, there was these recommendations to flush the plumbing.
So am I worried about it if I flush my water, but 10 neighbors don't? That's my
It's not going to leach backwards into the system from, from their home into your home.
Okay, thank you.
Martha Burke, Cedar Point Drive. I received in the past couple of weeks a letter in the mail regarding lead and so it's safe water. So can you address, it's kind of a vague letter about lead in our water?
This is before Dr. Jock's time here. When Dr. Jock did his study, we did not know of any lead service lines. We have since found four through the village. We had three exceedances on those service lines, three lead exceedances. That letter that you got is a lead education.
It's pretty vague and it's a little concerning, so.
So everybody should know what their service line material is. The DNR has us all working on service line inventories. We have a lot of your information. There's still a lot that we need. It's an ongoing, what else?
If I can add on to it, the water main is cast iron. So because they, back in the 1930s and a little bit later, they couldn't make the service line to your house in cast iron, so they made them out of lead. So we have four homes in Williams Bay that have, that part has some, it varies on each home that's being fixed, otherwise there is, as far as we know now, there is no other lead anywhere. So we had to send out a survey, but Public Works has gotten a lot of responses back on that one. We waited until everybody's back, a lot of people are back from Florida to address this, so we, so the most returns of that. And so then we addressed all those four and the homeowners have agreed to it, how it's going to get fixed and that is all going to be done by Adling is going to fix it pretty soon, as soon as they can get to it.
All right, so I'm a little confused. So how would I know if I have lead in my system?
Well, if you want to know for sure and you don't want to check it yourself, Wayne will come out to your house or Public, one of his guys, and they will look at your, and see if you have lead or not. But the first question is, how old is your house? How you don't know?
30s, 1930s.
Okay, so Wayne, can you, you have an address? He will stop by your house and he will check it for you.
I will also add that there can be lead piping in your home, so not just from the water system. So we have steps that we recommend everybody take to reduce lead exposure in their water. This is obviously when you can be drinking your water. So that flushing we talked about earlier is also helpful to reduce any, any metal levels, including lead, taking that aerator, that screen off and rinsing it out because chunks of metal can get stuck in there. Using cold water for cooking, so not the hot water because things can build up again in the bottom of our water heaters. And flushing the water for several minutes before using it. So making sure you flush your water for like three or so minutes before you actually use it for drinking or things like that. You can use it to water your plants, you can use it to do the dishes, you know. But this is because like we don't, you know, we don't necessarily know if we have lead plumbing in our homes and a lot of homes do, even in like a faucet or something could have a little bit of lead in it. So these are steps everyone could take to just reduce that potential for exposure. We have information on our webpage, so I can send that link out to folks just so that we can just cross that one off, off the list.
I think our line is coming to an end here, but we'll let people get down here. Oh, all right, please.
Hi, Rena Monroe, 372 Fair Oaks Drive. Just a question, has the board considered, let me start all over. We all received a letter that the water was going to be increased and that was, I don't remember when, soon. Have you considered not increasing that at that time because of the issue or, I mean, just waiting until all this is passed and, you know, I know there's infrastructure, everything has to be paid. We have to, you know, eventually get our water back, you know, we haven't had an increase and we appreciate that. And I know that a lot of this has to get paid by that, but is there any kind of consideration for holding up on the water increase rate?
So the Public Service Commission controls the water rates, electric rates and the, what is it? Gas, yeah, for the gas, sorry. And so they set the rates and so there are two ways how you can do a water rate increase. Either conventional, but it's a very long process. It's expensive. It takes two years to do that. It takes a lot of data, a lot of manpower, it takes money because they charge, they even charge it for it. Or we can do a conventional, a simplified rate increase. And that one actually, the Public Service Commission puts the, that, that one is designed to keep at pace with inflation. They put it on their website and every municipality is encouraged every year to, to increase the water rates by the simplified rate increase, which normally is about 3%. The reason why we have a higher water rate increase is because of all the improvements and upgrades that we have taken on. We had to borrow money for that and the Public Service Commission's main goal is that we, to make sure that we have enough money, revenue coming in to pay all the bills, including pay off debt. So this is not something, this hasn't, it still has to go to the board. We, today we have gotten the confirmation letter, the letter saying we need, you need to do that. There is no, they don't say you can do it, you have to do it. We have to, we said we, it has to be published, which we will do. It has to go to the village board meeting for approval and after we publish it, then we have 90 days to implement it. So most likely, if this all goes forward, the first rate increase you will see would be on your January bill next year.
Next year, okay, thank you.
All right, I'll give everyone, anyone else that has a question a moment to come down. I did have one question for Dr. Jock. One factor that wasn't brought up in your slide or tonight is that this nitrification by the bacteria, as I understand it, it's a metabolic process. So that means heat is a factor, correct? Or no? And is it the idea that we're here at the end of August, at the end of one of the hottest summers, is that a reason why we're seeing this now and where maybe we didn't see it 10 years ago?
No, it's a great question. The bacteria that do nitrification do not like it when it gets down into the 30s. That's why wastewater plants have trouble doing wastewater treatment in winter with nitrification. So the warmer it gets, the more active those bacteria are. So if our water temperature is in the 70s or 80s in the tower, then we are going to have more nitrification happening there at a faster rate. So it's a great question. So a warmer summer definitely would enhance nitrification and it would happen much quicker.
So if the village does, and we absolutely have the intention to go forward with voluntary distribution system testing for nitrates and nitrites, would we want to be doing that in the summer months? Would you say quarterly, like do we, should we bother testing in the winter? I mean, that sounds, but I'm just from your, in your opinion?
Yeah, we, we wouldn't need to do it in winter. I'm more concerned with the treatment program that's going forward to make sure that we are minimizing the amount of ammonia that's there. That's the most critical part of it. And if we want to do ammonia testing and nitrite testing at the same time, I think that's good practice. So, you know, doing a total chlorine test, I would do a free chlorine test to make sure that we haven't gone too far and then do nitrite and ammonia. I'm not concerned about nitrate. I know people are concerned about nitrate, but there isn't enough gas in the tank to get nitrate above 10. We have enough gas in the tank to have nitrite, you know, at two or three, but we don't have enough there to get a nitrate of 10. So not waste the money, but if you want to ease the concerns, it's a, it's an inexpensive test. But I would do that when the new plant goes on. But I would do that when the new plant goes on, I probably would do that weekly. And once we get a good feel for the plant, then you could switch to monthly or quarterly. But if there's, you know, if somebody has a funky odor, then that's something to be addressed. Because it could be that the pH has dropped and then now we're, we need to do some flushing in that area.
Yeah, please, ma'am, if you just, Ms. Marunde, if you could just come back up.
Just as you mentioned, to make sure that the chlorine doesn't get too high, what is too high? And there are, there are health risks involved with high chlorination. So like, what is that balance and who is watching that for us?
Right, the regulatory limit for chlorine, whether it's free chlorine or total chlorine, is four milligrams per liter. We cannot put it into the system at more than four milligrams per liter. So the plant is already doing that testing and will continue to do that testing at the entry point. So I'm, so what we, that these reactions, some of them take a little longer. So it may look like, you know, we have, so we may have a total chlorine of four at the entry point, but we might have ammonia point two or point three. That suggests to me that we might actually push it higher in the system. So as long as we're monitoring it good at the entry point and we're keeping our chlorine, our ammonia low, and the idea is that we're not going to chlorinate the four, we're going to chlorinate at two and a half or two. So we're well below that standard. But I'm more concerned about making sure that something isn't changing over in the system and it's worse in the summer. So we want to do more testing in the summer and be aware of odors.
At this time, if we don't have any audience questions, I just want to ask, trustees have any questions for the experts today? I know Rob's grabbing the mic, so I'll let Rob.
No, while we are talking about safety and we're so all worried about the safety of the water, I want to bring up something and I ask maybe for a show of hands here because we got Jen Church here, she is with Walworth County Health Department. So we put lime, lime in the water and not too many communities do that anymore. And the reason why we do that is because it, the lime not only makes your water soft, so you don't need a water softer, but the other benefit is it removes aluminum, copper, lead, and radium. And radium is ray down in liquid form. So a while ago, I can't remember, several months ago, we had a ray down, free test giveaways, so you can test that. You can also buy a kit for ray down testing on Amazon, for example, for 20 hours. But I, she wants to repeat it. Do you guys want to repeat it? So we have another ray down test kit giveaway here so you guys can test it. You should, in my opinion, because about 55% of Williams Bay has radium in the ground. And this is important, you test it really. Can I see a show of hand, anybody wants to do that? Okay, so Jen, are you on it? No, okay.
Do any of the other trustees at this time have a question for the experts while we have them here? All right, I'm going to give a last minute, yeah, please, sir, come down if you have, for the public, this is going to be kind of a last call for questions. Yes, sir, please come down. You, Pachin, Pachin?
I don't know if this was brought up.
Milson, right?
627 Jackson Parkway. I don't know if this was brought up. Is the proximity of Kishkoakto, which is swampy and boggy, where the water wells are, I believe they're right located in proximity close, does that harm? Has that been taken into evaluation? Or is that known fact of any other villages, cities, or towns, ships around the state? Or as compared of solid ground digging wells or for municipalities in, like Milwaukee, do they get their water in a well or is it like Michigan or? Okay.
Milwaukee, it's water from Lake Michigan. But where the well, the village's wells are, we have that marshy area, but the groundwater generally wants to flow from the northwest to the southeast towards the lake. That's the groundwater table. But there are these buried valleys that reverse that flow pattern. So it's really hard to tell exactly where the water is flowing. But that marshy area there, and there's an elevation difference between this lake and Lake Como. So we have water that can move in a number of different ways, but generally the shallow aquifer system wants to move from the northwest to the southeast towards the lake, not through that marsh.
And the decomposing bog doesn't have any effect as far as you know?
But there are other, so that's where that is, but there could be some buried lenses that we don't see on the surface.
Okay. And has this happened anywhere in the state at all before? And how long did it take to fix it?
We've done, we've done testing throughout the state. And there are communities that have elevated ammonia in their water. This is one that's chlorinated, which is the highest. Ammonia is not regulated. We've looked at a number of state-owned facilities that are on their own water systems. You know, so we've worked in the prisons and the state parks and, you know, historical centers. And there are some of them out there that have ammonia at seven to 10 milligrams per liter. But they don't have as much of an issue, partly because of how those systems are constructed. So I can't really get into all those details. But how this system is constructed in that it's open air and how it's treating and how we wind up having the nutrients available in the distribution system, then we get this nitrification happen, we just got to get rid of the food.
The only thing I want to add to that is I've worked on wells in Lake Como, Elkhorn. Elkhorn's the highest point in the county. It has ammonia in its water also. So it's not necessarily where the bog is. It's simply where the water's coming from.
So Kishkoakto doesn't really have an effect?
Other than making it poorer to build buildings down here, I don't see a difference in the water.
And I'm assuming that's where the water filtration plant, the plant has always been there since the foundation of the village?
I believe the plant was started in the 1930s.
At that location?
Yes.
And then another question, I don't know if it's for Chief Tim's. I don't know if Sneaky Pete's are coming in from surrounding areas or anywhere, because this is broadcast, I've seen it on Chicago News also. And I don't know what the policy is for checking, because I just drove up on Saturday, but I knew a few of the officers and they didn't ask for IDs. So I don't know what the procedure and, you know, it's hate to see the bad element to come in and take advantage.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, Mark. We have been, because our main focus has been just making sure the residents get their water, we have not been checking IDs. That may change in the near future, but just to expedite the process, we've just been taking people for their word and, again, relying that good people are good people and just hoping that they're, they're taking care of themselves. And if they need a couple extra for their neighbors, we're trusting that that's what they're doing. So appreciate that.
Just on Saturday, when I first, it was the first time I came here theater and down, but I seen cars coming. I don't know where the village, is it Bailey Estates? Is the cutoff point for Williams Bay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, maybe they were coming from there. I didn't know if they were coming from elsewhere. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, with the, just a moment here.
Thank you. So I just wanted to kind of summarize. So with the additional chlorine, flushing out the system, the treatment upgrades that we're doing, and then the commitment to do distribution system testing above and beyond what the DNR is requiring, is this a one and done? I mean, once this is all done, should we not expect to have any issues with the safety of our water going forward?
I can address that one. The source of the problem is the ammonia. If we control the ammonia at the water plant, and we're going to have to report on that every day for, you know, and turn it in at the end of the month. So the DNR is going to be watching us. We should not have, this should be a one and done. Because we're actually treating at the source and we're continuing treating. So the DNR will see how much chlorine we add every day, how much water we pump every day, what our calculated dosage rate is every day.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments at this time, we are going to close the public hearing at this time. I want to thank everyone for their questions, their comments, their patience getting through this entire process. There was a lot of great points, how we can be handling everything better on our end, especially from information transparency and clarifying some of those flush water orders. We want to thank you for that. And I want to give a big thanks to the experts that probably had to do some long drives to get down here today and share their expertise with us. So thank you, everyone. We are going to be, we have village business that we do need to be going through today, approval of minutes, some accounting, and a couple of things that are very time sensitive. So if you want to stay around and hear some of that, but we're not going to be mentioning any more of the water, or water solutions that we're doing right now, so. And if you guys want to leave, Dr. Jock, thank you. Jesse Jensen, thank you. Dr. Yang, thank you so much. If you want to head out, you're welcome to. Yeah, there might be some residents that want to talk to the experts out in the cafeteria. If you're willing to, maybe make yourself available for that. But at this time, we're going to, we do have more village meetings, meeting to get to, and we're going to continue with that. So the next item on the agenda will be the approval of the village board meeting minutes of August 18th, 2025. To entertain a motion. Okay, we have a first and a second on a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes of August 18th, 2025. Any discussion or correction on these minutes? We'll let it clear out a little bit so that Tina can hear. She's the one taking dictation and making the notes. Yeah, you know, Tina, going forward, I'll announce who first and seconds, because I can hear. That one, we had, we had the first from Russell and the second from, is that right? Second from Vlock. Yeah, so we, yes.
Thank you. So this is under the Building, Zoning, and Ordnance Committee, item D, possible, sorry, yeah, item D, Discussion and Possible Action on an Ordnance Renumbering Sections 1, 2, 8-8. What is not included in the minutes that were in my notes was that there was a request for the attorney to revise the ordinance change to add sales tax as evidence of the business no longer operating.
All right, we have that clarification in, Tina. Thumbs up. All right. So without objection, we'll accept that correction. All right, so all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as corrected, please vote aye. Any opposed, vote no. All right, that's all ayes from us, Tina. That motion carries. The next item is going to be the presentation of accounts and petitions. I'm going to hand this over to trustee Wright, please. Yeah, can you turn that, the mic needs to get turned on.
Is that better? There we go. Okay. I present for board approval the report of payroll ending 8/22/2025, amount of $57,485.36.
Give me one second.
There's a first and a second on the motion to accept the payroll. Any questions, corrections on this motion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Any opposed, vote no. That's all ayes, Tina.
Secondly, I present for board approval the report of accounts payable unpaid dated 8/29/2025, amount of $520,298.45.
Give me one second.
There's a first and a second on the motion to accept the accounts payable unpaid. Any questions or corrections on this motion?
Just a comment for the audience and the board members that might, that are still here. Most of that is project-related and comes from borrowed funds.
I got a question for Wayne, and Wayne, I hate to ask this one, tonight, air gas, about 42, 47 carbon dioxide, what's the carbon dioxide used for? Recarbonating the water. With the lime process, the lime softening process, you raise the pH to 5. Aye. And then you add CO2 back. Recarbons, it brings pH back. Thank you.
The answer there was to recarbonate the water during treatment.
Jennifer, on the storage costs, at base storage, it indicated 10, I think 10, 125 to 9, 3025? Is that really for next year? Thank you.
All right, there's a first and a second on the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Aye. Any opposed, vote no. We got all ayes, Tina. Trustee Wright?
And finally, I present for board approval the accounts payable prepaid dated 8/22/2025, amount of $20.
All right, the second is from Uman's, trustee Uman's again. There's a first and a second on the motion to accept the accounts payable prepaid. Are there any questions or corrections to this, to this motion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Aye. Any opposed, vote no. All ayes again there. All right, thank you trustee Wright for that. The next item in our list as we have it now is going to be a chance for public comments. Given just how many we had, we are going to enforce the two-minute amount just today. But if you do have a public comment, please step up, name, address, and ask it. All right, we got one contested coming down. And you're going to need to turn that mic on. There's a second one, okay.
Hi, I'll make this fast. Connie Gluth, 95 Lakey. I had asked once before about the crossing walks by the park there on Geneva Street. We couldn't see around the cars when the kids crossed the street there. And you were going to look into it because you were going to possibly replace Geneva Street? Do you remember that, Anne? Okay. I just wanted to remind everybody that they still have that in their radar, right? The crossing to move the, okay, thanks, bye.
Thank you, Ms. Gluth. Are there any other public comments at this time? There actually will be one more opportunity tonight. All right, hearing none, we're going to move on. We have a couple committee reports tonight, Protective Services, trustee Vlock, please.
We have one item on the agenda tonight. They are temporary operator license. Both of them are for Kishkoakto Nature Conservancy. The first one is for Jennifer Yunkin and the second one is for Allison Larkin. And I would make a motion that we approve them based upon them passing the police background check.
So we had a, the motion's by Vlock and the second is by Franzen. We have a first and a second on the motion to approve the liquor license applications as presented by trustee Vlock. Are there any questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Aye. Any opposed, vote no. That's all ayes, that carries unanimously. Thank you trustee Vlock. We do have one item here for trustee Bartholomew with Streets and Highways. Trustee Bartholomew, please.
Thank you, President Paramello. Fontana Triathlon is scheduled for Saturday, September 13th, and they have requested that we do temporary street closures during that event. Chief Tim, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, the Fontana came up to me, I want to say about a month ago, and requested that they shut down North Lakeshore. They're already shutting it down on their end, coming towards Williams Bay. Their request is that we shut down North Lakeshore going towards Fontana. So since it's already going to be closed one way, they were hoping to get it closed going down. I don't have the exact times for you. I believe it was, I think it was from 6 until 2 or something like that, just to give some leeway to get the signage, the proper signage up. From a public safety standpoint, I support that, especially when you have runners on the road. I know that that can get a little.
Sorry, sir, just we can't address you right now at this time, sorry.
The, so the cones and the setup and everything would have to start around, I think, between 5 and 6 a.m., and then it would be shut down. My one request is that whoever's putting on the event, which I believe it is Fontana, would make sure that the residents are aware that they are going to be doing this and notifying any businesses on that way. I don't believe it's during any business hours of construction for the businesses that might be traveling. might be traveling to and from, but we would want to get that information out there as well to the contractors that use that area.
Thank you, Chief Tim. So I will move that we do a temporary street closure for the Fontana Triathlon on North Lakeshore Drive, south of Highway 67.
Second, Wright.
All right, there's a first and a second. The second is from trustee Wright, to accept that road closure request, time, exact time, TBD, on September 13th, 2025. Any questions on this motion? All right, hearing all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote no. All right, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you trustee Bartholomew. All right, this will be the final opportunity tonight to make a public comment. Again, just in the interest of time, we are going to limit them to two minutes tonight. We normally don't, but we will. So if you have one, please, name and address and come on down. All right, we're not seeing any, second option, second opportunity. Third call, all right, we're not getting any tonight, so we're going to look for a motion to adjourn this segment of the meetings tonight.
Second.
All right, there's a first and a second. The motion was made by trustee Umanz with the second coming from trustee Vlock to adjourn. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Aye. Any opposed, vote no. That motion carries unanimously. All right. Now I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the village board committee of the whole and committees for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Roll call, please.
President Haramello.
Present.
Trustee Bartholomew, here.
Here.
Trustee Wright.
President.
Trustee Black.
Here.
Trustee Russell.
Here.
Trustee Franzen.
All right, we do still have a quorum this evening. First item will be the approval of the joint village board committee of the whole and committees meeting minutes from August 4th, 2025. Chair would entertain a motion.